All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session for Monday, August 30th, 2021. The time is now 4:03 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. The first item on the agenda is the call to the audience for issue review session items. Speakers will have up to three minutes to address the city council. Madam Clerk, with already comment cards received from the public wanting to speak on any item.
No input received for tonight's meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then I will close the public portion of the meeting. I'm going to move things around just a little bit this evening by taking item number 2C, which is our special events COVID-19 guideline update, and I believe that's going to be our deputy city manager, Rosa Enchowsky.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. This is actually Andrew Chang, city manager.
Andrew!
Thanks. I thought that I could just kick things off this afternoon, and then I'll turn it over to Rosa Enchowsky, and then she will turn it over to Keith Burke, our community services director. And I just wanted to kick it off by saying, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to council on a regular basis about our efforts in addressing the COVID-19 global pandemic and how it's affected the city of Tempe. There is, as we know, this Delta variant has proven to be significant concern from a public health standpoint. We are cognizant of that and have been tracking and working diligently to try to address it in the best way that both we at a local level and nationally, we recognize that would be, which is to educate and to vaccinate, educate people about vaccinations, that they are safe and effective, and to get as many people vaccinated as possible. We've spoken to you already, council, about these efforts, and we have Rosa Enchowsky here to talk about that. And we wanted to focus our attention tonight in this COVID update to some emerging issues with special events. I think we will agree that Tempe has historically been a place, a real gathering place for special events of many different types. And we are, that is part of who we are as a community and as a city. And so we are faced with, how do we continue to allow for special events in a way potentially that, or potentially allow for these events in a way that is safe and given all of the things that we already know about this pandemic, the manner in which vaccinations are a way to address COVID-19, and how we're intending to move forward? So in the largest or broadest context of what we're doing in our efforts, we wanted to start with what Rosa has been doing, has been tasked with, and then hand it off to Keith. So at this time, I will go ahead and allow for the next speaker, which will be Rosa Enchowsky, our deputy city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Good afternoon, everyone. Rosa Enchowsky, deputy city manager, and it's really my pleasure to be here with you to share what has been a huge lift from this organization with our vaccination hesitation, addressing vaccination hesitation in our community. It has been a campaign with multiple departments, and if I can just say, it has really been two things focused on partnerships and meeting people where they are. That from the start has been the focus of our organization. So we have had about six different campaigns, clinics in our city, all focused on 85281, which we know has been the hesitation, the zip code with most hesitation for vaccination. And out of those six vaccination sites, we have had a total of 237 vaccines, along with testing. And I'd just like to say that St. Margaret's Church was our highest vaccination rate, and that was in the span of three hours in partnership with Ignah Selena Imam, which is a pantry for our refugee community. We had 57 vaccinations in that span, which is huge lift. And once again, I'd like to remind everyone, this is not the people who wanted to get vaccinated, or else they would have. These are folks who had questions about health, who had questions about their children and the vaccine, and more importantly, about registration and administration of their information of public health, and perhaps even looking at the future and selecting what vaccine so they didn't have to come back for a second shot, things like that. Our team has held babies while people get vaccinated. We have helped people fill out forms in different languages. And more importantly, we have seen people a sigh of relief with getting the vaccine or getting tested and seeing the results. So really, I am one person here sharing this information, and what you have before you, thanks to Martha Garner and the team, our PIOs have created a map there where you can see it, 85281, and the specific sites that we have tested, and more to come. And today, we are starting our partnership with the school district. Dr. Driscoll has partnered with us for three schools, and we have one currently at Laird School, which we have folks working there. One of the things I wanted to share with all of you, while these are some outstanding numbers, this has been a partnership with the county. Once again, Dr. Rebecca Sunnenshine and the fantastic relationships our fire medical rescue department has, our chiefs have, with Dr. Rebecca Sunnenshine, who has basically offered the vendor to come anywhere we would like to identify, and they come out, and it basically is covered through CARES Act funding, that the county takes care of all that. So all the testing and the vaccines that we have had in this campaign has been a partnership with Dr. Rebecca Sunnenshine. And just to share with you where we are right now with vaccination, when we started, or looking at July a month ago, it was about 55% for the first shot as far as eligible. And I share that with you because I think it tells you, within the last few, the last 30 days, first shot now for city of Tempe eligible is 59%. And that tells you the fast pace and acceleration of what these last 30 days have meant. Fully vaccinated for Tempe is about 53%. We do have 85284, that is now over 75% vaccinated, and we still work on the areas that obviously we are focused here before you. With recognizing that our median age in Tempe is 28 years old, we know we have a huge lift. We know that through the PULSE survey, the area, the age group that is having the most hesitation is that 20 to 34-year-olds. And with that, we have focused on specifically meeting people where they are, not just in churches or community centers, but really even Park After Dark. We had one on Saturday evening in partnership with our DTA and Kit Borders and her team, and we had 30 people vaccinated at Park After Dark. So it is really gratifying to actually have the mobile unit come out, even if it means coming out to Mill Avenue near our bars, to make sure that people understand that this is a campaign that we need all hands on deck to get this done. And then finally, I know what you have before you. Keith Burke is going to be sharing with you what he has proposed with his team and all of us, looking at how do we handle our special events. Tempe is in a great position that we have, we have many people who want to come to live music and come to our special events downtown, and now hopefully with the weather improving, perhaps we had looked at using this as a strategy to leverage reaching that age group that I had mentioned, the 20 to 34-year-olds who attend these events, and perhaps leverage some opportunity to get them vaccinated. And I will turn it over to Keith, but what you see before you is some of the research we have been conducting in our city with multiple departments and looking at live venues, and what you see before you is the Arizona Independent Venues signing the letter that they require now proof of COVID vaccinations or a negative test result to attend their concerts by or before September 20th, 2021. So we know that this is something that is taking place, not just in our state, but nationally. And with that, I will turn it over to Keith to share with you a little more details regarding the events, and then I'll be available to help Keith out with any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rosa, and thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keith Burke, community services director. Hope you can hear me. I see my face doubled up there. But just wanted to follow up in reference to what Rosa was sharing. As we move into the fall and our normal time of the season of special events, as you know, we are one of the busiest cities in the state in providing events throughout all parts of our community, and specifically more than even the downtown by Tempe Beach Park and Arts Park and Town Lake. As we move through the week, we've had many discussions about the mitigation strategies that are in place, that were in place prior to the summer, some of the things that we tried to do last year in reference to moving through events. And as we started talking a bit more as we're getting closer to September and really kicking off the event season, we realized the discussions, you know, kind of raised up in reference to the high transmission rates and the zip codes that Rosa shared, and further the conversations of what we should be doing to help mitigate some of those, those high transmission rates. So in reference to try to help with those mitigation strategies, we've provided an update memo, which was in your packet this past week, in reference to just summarizing the categories of events that we will be approving and coming this, back to this, this fall. The events that basically summarize with the walks, runs, and triathlons, kind of goes in reference to what some of the things we left off in reference to the Ironman event, really working with the promoters and working with a number of people in those walks or runs and trying to figure out how to safely deploy those start and stop times for the community to participate and be in a safe environment. You know, with that, too, we've also looked at non-gated or small gated events and festivals, markets, parades, you know, small block parties where those are more in open areas, where they're not really fenced and enclosed, events where they, people can come and go. I think we're all familiar with the arts festivals put on by DTA, some of the other events that we've had down the little Sixth Street markets, and some of our other small, just, you know, gated tailgate parties and things like that that are put on by some of the ASU participants and bars and facilities down the downtown as we get ready for ASU's fall football season, which kicking off a game this Thursday. So those are some of the things that we captioned, some adding some of those mitigation strategies. And then there's basically the large gated events, I think, that brought the most concern forward about getting a large amount of people in a gated area and a confined space and being together to enjoy music, like live music like Rosa had shared, and, you know, being in that concert environment. And so we get live, large gated events like that in reference to understanding how we can safely move those forward, we added the elements of, you know, requiring the proof of vaccination, and then also the negative COVID test within 72 hours as part of the new stipulations to allow event goers to come and participate and still do that safely. We've even gone on to have, you know, event promoters work with Rosa and her team to help with some of that education and advertisement of the vaccination clinics, testing clinics, to help with that education and messaging throughout our community. So, you know, with that, those are some of the things we wanted to really emphasize today in reference to moving forward with special events and try to bring those back, you know, this fall, as they are very important to the downtown and to the businesses, as you saw in the packet, the support letters from the DTA and tourism about how much the events bring to our community and our city. And we want to make sure that we can do it in a safe manner. I know we're all eager to work together to make it safe and make it right and open up these lines of communications and why we're sharing this information with you tonight, and even taking a step further in reference, so in reference to what Rosa shared about those venues in the valley that are indoor, that are requiring those extra mitigation strategies to enter their venues. We wanted to do that even for our ticketed events in TCA, and we added that on to the memo for you to consider, you know, that moving forward because we want to get going with TCA events this fall as well, because we're scheduled to open up here in the next few weeks and provide opportunities for the community to come back and engage in our facilities as safe as possible. So the things that we've outlined in the memo for is the special event permitting process, we've already implemented, but I know we're bringing it back for feedback tonight. But we did want to get some direction in reference to how to move forward with the TCA and opening back up in a safe manner and bringing those ticket goers in and feeling confident that they can come to our facility. And some of that research and study show that basically for that type of event, you know, being tight quarters, if you think of the theater and the studio, being a ticketed event and sitting next to folks in a tight manner, that, you know, they would, you know, have some insurances being vaccinated or being next, near somebody that is basically tested negative in a recent, you know, 72-hour period. So that's something that is, just like Rosa said, is going on already, and we wanted to not only include that for TCA indoor, but we've also already added it to our outdoor large gated events. So with that, you know, feel free to answer any questions, or Rosa, if you wanted to jump back in and follow up. But that's just kind of summarizing the memo.
You did a great job, Keith. We'll just take any questions the mayor and council may have.
Well, thank you, Rosa. Thank you, Keith. Really appreciate it. I just, I have a few comments that I wanted to make about this. So, and of course, I'll give council the, you know, opportunity as always to weigh in, whether it's on the Tempe Center for the Arts. I know there's been a lot of conversation about the Boots in the Park concert on September 18th, or just in general, the policy that staff has laid out tonight for our consideration. So council is free, whatever to weigh in on, whatever they like. Couple things I wanted to say, just first and foremost, though. You know, during my, you know, first year on council as mayor, we had to cancel everything. I mean, everything that happened in the fall, every large-scale event had to be canceled. And quite honestly, I believe that was the right decision, and if there were no vaccines around, I would absolutely support that decision again. Last year when this all happened, the only mitigation strategy that any of us had, because there was no Pfizer or Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson, the only thing we were able to do was to socially distance. And that meant for many of us, staying home, not going out to restaurants, not going out to public events, either indoor or outdoor. We were still learning a lot about the virus at that point, and given that there weren't any vaccinations or any way to keep yourself from contracting COVID or from getting a milder case, social distancing was the only tool that we had available. That's obviously changed very much now with the advent of vaccinations. You know, are the vaccinations absolutely will keep you from getting COVID entirely? We found that sometimes it won't. You, you might still get a breakthrough case, but what we're finding is those people who are getting the breakthrough cases are not getting nearly as sick, and we're not seeing the hospitalizations, people on ventilators, or even the deaths for people who are going out and getting the vaccine. So from my perspective, I mean, even in looking at just how things have been changing, this is example, I think, you know, Keith mentioned that sporting events are beginning to start up again. I knew people last year who were not going to conferences or even any kind of business event that required getting on a plane. I knew companies and people who had made their whole careers traveling around the country, both nationally and internationally, to do business, and all of that got stopped. But that's now begun to pick up as well. You know, now we have mandatory masking in every airport, and we have to wear masks while on airplanes, and a lot of that business and commerce and those in-person meetings and conferences are beginning to happen again, due to the vaccinations, but also the proper mitigation protocols that have been put into place. I also think that we, I mean, just my general sort of thesis here is, the vaccines really are our way to solve this issue and get out of the wilderness. You know, we've seen in Denmark very recently, them lifting all of their kind of COVID mitigation because they're at over 71% right now, and it's 71% vaccination rates. And so they've decided that things are safe enough there to frankly open back up and really have everything without all of these different procedures and policies. So my perspective is, we have to find a way, and the city has set a very ambitious goal of getting to 75% vaccinations. We have to find a way to get there. And the best way of getting there is frankly with the great work that our staff is doing in collaboration with a lot of our community partners in the health profession, as well as our nonprofit community. But the best way to do that is by meeting people where they are. Sometimes there are certain people like me, I was immediately vaccinated on January 29th and February 26th, because I ran out the second I was able to get a vaccine to get one. But we know that some people are frankly hesitant or a little bit reluctant to get the vaccine. But as an example, this is why we're doing partnerships with our local school districts, as Rosa talked about, the most recent one being with our Tempe Elementary School District, because one of the things we heard from them is, there might be vaccination pods and clinics throughout the city, but where our families feel the most comfortable is when they're at their home schools, because they trust the teachers, they trust the administration, and they trust the staff. I had an opportunity to be out at Park After Dark, which was referenced earlier, in Sixth Street Park, just this past Saturday. The, as we all kind of know, locally and nationally, these, a couple of the groups where vaccinations have lagged a little is with African-Americans and Latinos. The crowd at Park After Dark was predominantly African-American and Latino. And in under four hours, we had over 30 people who were vaccinated, who might not otherwise have the opportunity, or who might not have had direct or immediate access, but they did it because we were in, we were at a function where people were congregating, and we were frankly finding ways to reach out to communities that many times have not had direct access. And I do believe that is the way out of this. The same thing could be said from my perspective when it comes to this Boots in the Park concert on September 18th. The promoter, in an email even said, that the majority of the population who are going to these concerts are in their 20s, 30s, and even early to mid 40s. That is also the population that many times has been a little bit more hesitant or reluctant to get the vaccine. The promoter has voluntarily made a decision that he is going to require proof of vaccination or a negative test within 72 hours of attending the concert. Some people may choose just to get the test, but quite honestly, if they're not truly scared of the vaccine and recognize that it's safe and efficacious, they may decide, look, given what this promoter's doing, which I think is very courageous, along with all those other live music venues that we actually saw, I also saw over the weekend, the Musical Instrument Museum in Phoenix is doing the same exact thing, Live Nation, Ticketmaster, the major national organizations are doing this. And so my perspective is, that is probably the best, you're going to get, some people, whatever, for the September 18th concert who might say, you know what, I'm just going to get the test. But you're probably going to have quite a number who are going to say, you know what, this is probably my time to actually just go ahead and get the vaccine. And the fact of the matter is, we will be able, if this is actually happening in Tempe, not only to meet people where they are at an event that's important to them, and live music is important to a lot of people and a lot of Tempe residents, but we will be able to successfully and adequately track that data, which is also what this city is all about, not just simply doing things, but tracking data in a very, very effective and efficient fashion. So from my perspective, the best way to get this done, whatever, is to meet people where they are, and that's a lot of people that we can meet where they are. And at a minimum, they can get the test. But what we would hope is that they would actually, they would actually make the decision that they want to get vaccinated and protect both themselves and their friends and their family and their neighbors. And so from my perspective, this is the way that we're going to have to go. This is industry standard, and it's frankly more than any other city that I've heard in the valley is willing to go when it comes to protecting both our residents and our business owners and other patrons. And I think it's critically important, and for that, I want to thank, you know, our deputy city manager, Rosa Enchowsky, and our community services director, Keith Burke, our fire chief, Greg Reese, and everyone frankly on our staff for coming together to put this together. These are not easy times. This is challenging. These decisions are tough to make, but the reality is, I think that we are in that next phase now, where the only way we're going to be able to really hit that 75% goal and get people the vaccine, which in my humble opinion, is the best way for us to really truly emerge out of this, is to meet people where they are, and this is the way to do it. So with that said, I just want to say thank you again to our staff for everything they have done. I greatly appreciate it. And I'm going to now look to council for their comments. First, I'm going to go to council member QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to echo your sentiment about our deputy city manager, Rosa Enchowsky. She's done an amazing job to get to where people are, to go to Santa Margarita Church in Love Victoria, tremendous success there, and to the fire medical rescue staff and to human services staff, you know, really, really impressive work there. But I'm going to have to disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, and respectfully disagree, and I want to explain why. So I have lots of concerns about hosting an event of, you know, up to 8,000 people, an event that's supposed to take place in 19 days. And yes, as you mentioned, there are vaccines, and that is different than what it was a year ago. However, those vaccines are shown to be weakening, so people are said to get boosters, and need to get boosters very soon, most, a lot of people. The Delta variant is three times more transmissible than the original variant, so that's a concern. That's different than it was last year. And contrary to what you said about some concerts, I, you know, I was just looking, doing a quick review, there are a lot of concerts being canceled. New Orleans Jazz Fest, it might have been canceled anyway, but New Orleans Jazz Fest canceled because of COVID concerns, Garth Brooks, Stevie Nicks canceled her whole concert series, Limp Bizkit, Kiss, the Pixies, and very strangely, Kid Rock. I mean, Kid Rock, you wouldn't think he'd necessarily cancel because he's concerned about community health, but I think there's three bad members that have COVID. So, you know, I was just Googling, and there are so many concerts that are being canceled and saying, we're going to have to wait till 2022. Um, so, and I know that we are getting closer to herd immunity, but Israel was at 80%, the highest, I think, in the world, aside from maybe New Zealand, and they are in the midst of a terrible outbreak now related to COVID, and you know, really, really terrible outbreak. So then, there's a lower efficacy concern. So Pfizer has been known to be in the 40s, I think I've heard 43 or 45% effective against the Delta variant, so that's a concern. Not only are the, all the vaccines weakening against, against the, sorry, COVID, there is, at least with Pfizer, it's identified that it's less effective against the variant. Children under 12 will be attending this concert, is a family-friendly show. We know that children under 12 are not vaccinated, so we're bringing our kids, and we have to fundamentally be concerned about our children. They're the most vulnerable among us, but they are going to be attending, or their parents are going to be attending, and perhaps bringing home some of the, you know, COVID viral levels. So, and then speaking of family-friendly events, is this one supposed to be Oktoberfest, which is, you know, really important to Tempe City, it's the main event they have that funds their programming. So this is a really, really hard decision they had to make, but they canceled, and their event's supposed to be in early October. I know when we were discussing this internally, we said, well, what about, what about Oktoberfest? Are we going to cancel that? Like, that's the big Tempe event, but they themselves decided to do that, and they also looked, they looked at the community health, they were also looking at the level of enforcement and the level of staffing they need to have to really truly check the vaccination records. They have found that with, with the tickets for Oktoberfest, they have a lot of counterfeit tickets, they have a counterfeit team that just really examines tickets, so there'd have to be, you know, concern about the possible, you know, fake tickets. And then, you mentioned that we're tracking data, like, I agree, we are tracking data, and we do a really good job of that, and I commend our staff, but why don't we use that data? In my mind, you know, it doesn't have to be a subjective decision to have one particular concert or to look at these events. We can look at, you know, percent positivity, we can look at transmission rates, we can look at hospitalization, and if the hospitals are overloaded, I was at Mayo Clinic today for a regular appointment, and they told me their hospital is full, so that's a concern. But, you know, going back to, you know, the health concerns, I did reach out to Dr. Joe Gerald, who is a, was a doctor, a medical doctor, and he is one of the leaders at the College of Public Health in, at U of A, and he's been very outspoken, and he's even been in touch with our staff in the past. And he said, when thinking about an event in Tempe on September 18th, he said, community transmission will be in the high range, greater than 100 cases per 100,000 residents per week. Community levels of vaccinations will be relatively low, as Rosa said, 53% fully vaccinated now. So if it's under 70%, that's, that's low in his mind. The activity will involve singing, chanting, and vocalizing in crowded settings, high risk. So he did, you know, say that holding the event outside will ensure that ventilation is adequate and could allow for physical distancing if it's enforced, which is going to be hard to do in a concert setting, I know, and requiring attendees to wear masks would reduce exposure. "And requiring attendees to wear masks will reduce exposure, possibly if someone is affected." However, adherence and enforcement of mask policies may prove difficult. It's impossible to say with certainty that holding an event, holding an event like that would, sorry, I'm losing my place in his letter, would lead to a specific number of infections, but conditions seem favorable for multiple exposures. Now, this is what he said, a summation statement. If, if it were me, I would not recommend holding such an event because of A) high existing community transmission, hospitals at near capacity, inadequate vaccination rates within the community, and an event even while outdoors exposes attendees to a moderate degree of risk. If A, B, and C conditions, getting back to the data like we were talking about, were more favorable, that would shift the risk benefit profile in a favorable direction. So I did reach out to him and ask if his, if he was thinking the same, same way today. And he said, yep, there's no, isn't any new information. We may be plateauing. That may be a good thing. But in either case, improvements are unlikely to be swift enough to see Maricopa County transition from high transmission to the next lowest category, which is substantial transition before September eighteenth. Because I wanted to get an update from him, because his email was last week. So, you know, we have these stipulations, and I, you know, I agree, it's better than having a concert without the stipulation. So let me, you know, say that. But I looked at the stipulations, we got them before the meeting, and the stipulations are merely proof of vaccination, proof of negative COVID test within seventy-two hours. So the big question is, who's gonna check? What kind of proof of vaccination? Is it a vaccine passport? Is it something digital, which is more reputable? Is it something that's just on a card? Because people can copy cards, right? And then often people don't bring their driver's license and their card to show the match. And who's gonna be checking those at the gate? Will it be the concert promoters? Because it's in their self-interest not to get a customer upset, but let them in, right? Or is it gonna be us? If it's us, then should we be paying for that? I don't know. And that, none of that is spelled out in the permit, which concerns me. So I know that the concert site has, and I'm almost done, guys. The concert site hasn't posted any information about these mitigation efforts. So that's concerning to me. And I've heard, well, they're waiting to hear what happens tonight. But they know, they've known pretty much that the permit was approved last week. So we've lost another five to six days, and we're nineteen days out. So is that time enough for people to get fully vaccinated? And even so, to be fully vaccinated is, shows a weaker efficacy against this deadly Delta variant, which is three times more transmissible. And also, what are our plans for enforcement? How are we gonna enforce? And we're gonna have firefighters there, first responders, and police. And they have vaccination rates, I think, less than what the, less than what the, the community vaccination rate is. So are we bringing a pipeline of transmission to our city employees? That's a concern of mine. So you can see, I have a lot of concerns, and I think we should be using metrics. It shouldn't be a subjective decision. And I've heard people say, we rely on events, they're really important to our economy and our local economy. Well, we can't have a strength, strengthened and local economy, local economy until we get this transmission under control. And right now, we're in a dangerous surge. We had, again, over three thousand cases today. If we've been over three thousand in the past, at least the past week. So for that reason, I think we should not be having this event. And I think that as far as the other events go, that we each go back to use the metrics that we had before we had the vaccine, and we need to develop a metric, percent positivity, levels of transmission, hospital, hospitalization. We need to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our public health, because, you know, we all want this to be over, we all want events to begin again. But even our, our own nonprofit Tempe City Cities has said, no, this is too, too dangerous to have and too costly to have it in the correct way, and almost impossible to enforce. So I would really urge the council to reject this event on September eighteen, and to look really seriously at using our data, using the metrics to develop, to develop a system where we can accept or turn down events and give them plenty of time in order to not, you know, lose, I understand events will, will lose money. They, they have to have their own, you know, timeframe to turn, to, to cancel it. I understand that. But I think we have to go back to the data. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I hope you know that I respect your positions, but, position, but I just can't, I just don't think this is the right thing to do in this setting. Thank you.
Absolutely. No, thank you, Councilmember QB. And definitely, you know, what you're gonna hear tonight from council is, people are gonna have different perspectives on this. But no, Councilmember QB obviously raises excellent points. And as she says, you know, many times she and I are completely on the same page on things. This happens to be a night where we have a little bit of a difference of opinion. But obviously, this is what public policymaking is, and a good, robust policy discussion is, is good for all of us to have. So I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember QB's comments, very much so.
Mr. Mayor, can I share? I know she asked a question or two in reference to that. Yeah, so in reference to how the event would work, and just like any other event, it's on the event promoter to make sure that they're enforcing the rules and regulations to move forward. And it's, it's on the task force to, to make sure that they're following through with that. And we've obviously had many, many meetings with the promoter since Thursday in reference to try to get them up to speed and telling them about the new requirements. And we're working with Nikki Ripley and her team in reference to a joint communication process to roll out the update to their website, to the new mitigation strategies, to the vaccination sites that are being added by the vendor that, that Fire and, and Rosa and her team have been working with to, to add to the community for testing and vaccination sites that are being added. So we are working through that. I realize other concerts and things are, that have been canceled and also going on. We've had larger concerts throughout the nation have gone on, La La Palooza and Austin City Limits. Those are very large concerts that are moving forward. The Boots in the Park is about eight thousand in participation if they get to that point. The space that they're in that's fenced off is, it's capable of capacity of holding twenty-five thousand. So it's, it's well under fifty percent capacity for this event. And you talk about the Oktoberfest, you know, we've been in contact with them today. We would love for the Oktoberfest to move forward, but understand their decision to, to cancel and not move forward. And their event's a little bit bigger than this concert, so understand that their, their event is just, it's just different. And so it's unfortunate that they decided to cancel at this time. And, but we wish them well and want to get them back as soon as we can as well. But the mitigation strategies that we have in place, we think are, are good for the concert, and we'll continue to work forward and, and whatever changes we need to make and, and go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember QB?
If I could just respond to that, thank you. And I know you're doing your very best under this situation, and that mitigation measures are, you know, as strong as they can be. And, and myself and Councilmember Adams, we brought up La La Palooza in discussions when we had operations call about this. And, you know, that, that is a good example. They had very low transmission rate. But that was also before it was known, I mean, before the Delta variant seized the nation and before we started seeing real surges. So, and, and that was before it became, became known too, that you're really exposing yourself more than before, because the vaccines themselves are weakening, just weakening generally. So I just countered with that. And like I said, concerts are being canceled now, because we are seeing, we are seeing surges. And there are some states that are worse than others. I think we're like mid-range according to the, according to some of the reports I've looked at. But I, you know, I, I don't understand that, I don't know how you're gonna have the counter, handle the counterfeit issue. Who's gonna be in charge of that? If it's not spelled out in the permit, is the concert promoter really gonna go to all that trouble? Someone is being paid, you know, twelve, fifteen dollars an hour? Are they gonna get into an argument with someone over masks and over, over, over their vaccine permit? I mean, vaccine card? I don't know. But it seems like it should be spelled out in a permit, because it seems like it's gonna be hard, very difficult to enforce. And then it's social, there's not even a social distancing requirement there. That's obviously not gonna be easy to enforce. And I guess you're not gonna have a mask requirement, because there's no mask listed under the stipulations for approval. So, you know, to me, there are some mitigation measures. We had talked about masks. They're not there, at least they're not in this, the stipulations we saw before the meeting began. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're doing everything you can, given the circumstances. But I think fundamentally, this event should not be held. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all that's been talked about. Appreciate Councilmember QB's thoughts on this. And I appreciate your thoughts too on this whole conversation. Lots to unpack, for sure. And there's a lot of difference of opinions that I'm sure that are out there from various parts of the community. I do agree with you, Mayor, that this is potentially an event that we're going in the right direction in terms of trying to show proof of vaccination or within a certain amount of hours, seeing a negative COVID test come back. And I know that this is something that, you know, obviously we're living with. Obviously, things are going back into direction of somewhat normal. We're seeing football games with packed stadiums. We're seeing other concerts. We referenced La La Palooza, who I, I have to agree, they did a great job. I think we're hopefully gonna mirror something like that, no matter where the Delta virus was at that point in time. I could argue that it was present, possibly there. But, you know, who's to say this or that? But I think we do have some assurance, though, that the promoter is trying to take action on, on providing a concert in the right direction. We are seeing other concerts, concerts throughout the country. I know Councilmember QB named some other, you know, artists that canceled, but there are still other artists that are not canceling. We can also go out to a local pub or bar and watch a, a smaller concert out there. So it's stuff that is still happening. And technically, within those locations locally, there is not having to do these restrictions. I think we're going above and beyond, making sure that those restrictions are in place. And, and if we need more detail on how they're gonna act on those restrictions, I think that'd be good information. I think there's references to La La Palooza and how they did it. Listen, we're not gonna get doctors at the gates or, you know, people with, I don't know, expertise in certain areas, checking cars or everything like that. But we're gonna do our best in trying to mitigate that. I think it's also the, the other side of it too is, is we're showing that, you know, as we're seeing throughout the United States and probably throughout the world, we're showing that this is the way that people are training towards, to show that, hey, listen, I got my vaccination. I want my life to continue on. So I'm showing the proof of what I've done to make sure that I can do these events. And I think a lot of part of the community, or a lot of people within the community, like to have that option, knowing that they're doing the right thing. And I can't speak for the other people that choose not to get the vaccination, but I think that it also shows that, hey, listen, with more information coming out, with FDA approval on, on, on Pfizer and, and what they're coming across, you're starting to get more people, as we're seeing right now, getting the vaccination. And I think within our community, this is an opportunity, in my opinion, to also even try to administer a vaccine, vaccine if you have a proof of a negative COVID antibody or a negative COVID test. That is another possible opportunity to give a COVID shot. Maybe there's more information or more detail behind that. But I think that this is an advantage to try to get people on the right track. I know there's quite a bit of debate. Personally, I've got the shot, and I actually got COVID and the end of June, July. And yes, it was not as, as bad as, as probably it could have been. But the shot did have an effect, and it did help. And I got the shot literally six months prior, before my event. So I know that the duration does wear down after a point in time, and I think we're seeing studies on that too. Normal flu shot has been told in the past that has not been as quite as effective as this, as our COVID shots. Ninety-five percent effective. Usually, they're sometimes in the range of fifty to sixty percent effectiveness, you know, within a normal flu shot. So even with the shot that's in front of us now, it does have some effectiveness that a normal flu shot potentially would have. So it, it's hard to explain, or it's hard to, you know, justify this or that, I guess. But you still are holding events within our community that they're not even requiring these things, and especially in an ASU game. So I, I, I do, I do feel, you know, as, as much as possible for the people that did get their shot, that are showing that they are, you know, doing the right things. We're just showing them, hey, you're being responsible. Here's a responsible concert we're gonna, we're gonna promote. And I think this could be a template to, you know, further events that are going down the road of how we're gonna be doing. And, and, and use this as, as a guideline potentially, and maybe reinforce it even further. I don't know. But at this point, I'd be comfortable in going forward with this event. And I know that probably is against a lot of Councilmember QB's opinion, but I do think that we are showing the mitigation. And if there's further information after this meeting that is gonna come out with the promoter on what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it, then that'd be great. I would love to see that. I think that's what the city should be asking, and how the, how the promoter is gonna go about this. So with what has been said, I do feel like we're in a good direction. I, I do feel supportive of, of going forward with this, and I do appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Navarro. Really appreciate it. Any other council members, any comments or, or questions for staff regarding the proposed policy or anything else we've discussed? I see Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. You know, I wanted to say that I, you know, I really truly appreciate what Councilmember QB had said. I, I have so much respect for her. And Mayor, I really appreciate the comments that you made and that Joel made. This is a really big issue, and, you know, I think that we've all spent some time doing some research and thinking about this moving forward. You know, one of the things that I had thought about was, you know, when we look at this event, you know, the bottom line for, I think, for the city of Tempe and for the safety of our residents is we need our residents vaccinated. We need to get to that seventy-five percent level. And, you know, I look at this as an opportunity for us to do something special or something in the community that might be able to move the needle a little bit in saying that if we are going to allow this event to happen, that you need to be vaccinated. And I think it gives people the opportunity to see that, that we want tougher or stronger measures in things that are happening in the community. And, you know, and Joel was right, you know, when he mentioned about, you know, other, you know, small venue concerts and things going on around the city that are not having any of these types of requirements. So I do appreciate the mitigation strategies that we are trying to, are looking at implementing. I think if we, you know, cancel this concert, then we have essentially, yes, we've canceled the concert, and we've not allowed people to come into the community. But we've also then not done, it's like we have stopped doing things. Like, we haven't worked as hard as we could to try to move the needle, to try to get people vaccinated. And I think we can use this as a learning opportunity if we can get the promoter to help us with promotions and reaching those targeted areas and those people that we really, really need to get those shots to. You know, I have a, I have a question for Rosa or Keith. Are we going to be able to have vaccinations and COVID testing available at this concert venue?
Thank you, Councilmember Garland, for the question. We were in conversations on Friday, team of us internally, with the county vendor. So we identified having testing two days prior and the day of the event. The, the vendor was uncomfortable giving vaccines the day of the concert, obviously because there's alcohol at the event and there might be some side effects. She, we're still working out the details to see if, if the testing would happen early that morning and whether that would be a possibility. But it would be the testing on the day and vaccines and COVID testing two days prior to the event, along with our other campaign events and locations.
Okay.
As of right, as of right now, but we can check back with her.
Okay, great. Thank you. You know, I think that as Councilmember Navarro had said something about, you know, ASU events, I, I'd love to know, you know, that we, by setting some type of medication, mitigation strategies at this event, it could set an example for, you know, everything else that's going, every other gated event that's gonna be happening in our city, whether that's an ASU football game, or that's a high school football game, or other events that, you know, hopefully this might encourage or encourage the other, you know, areas in our community to follow suit and do this. Keith, I have one question. With the, the information that you sent us and the notes, it said that the required mitigation measures implemented for all special events are requiring or requesting face masks. If that is for all of the events, is that in addition to the mitigation strategy for this concert specifically?
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. And yes, the information that we provided in the front there was, it was, is highly recommended, you know, for all events in reference to the first section there, some of the things that, that we expect everybody to have in their, their COVID mitigation plans as they submit their application for special event permit. On, in addition to the way we broke down the different types of events and what other things would be expected for that type of event to, to add on to that requirement.
Okay, that's what I thought. So that's, that's to start off with baseline. That's for everybody. And then the other events, we're adding additional things to those.
Correct. And just working with the type of event that, you know, they're all unique in nature in reference to how many people and the layout, the footprint, the materials inside the event.
inside the event, tables, chairs, pop-ups, all those things, vendors, food trucks, and just the layout, and just making sure everybody, if there are opportunities to social distance and space they can, and just evaluating those types of events differently. But we just know the large gated events were the ones of major concern, and adding that element of the required vaccination or the negative COVID test.
Okay. And I, so just in reference specifically to what you were requesting from the council, I like the guidelines. I support the guidelines that you have written up here, and the expectations that you have for those. And regarding the TCA, specific option one or two, I like the option one. So specifically regarding your request today, there you go.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Next up, let me go to Vice Mayor Keating. Vice Mayor Keating? Okay, I can come, I can come back to him then. Let me go next up to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate it. This is a really good discussion we're having tonight. I was really hoping that we would have a medical doctor on this call tonight, because I think that's who we should be really basing this decision on. So I'm disappointed in that. I'm very impressed with Rosa's program, and Chief Reese's program going out into the community, and getting the shots, taking the shots to the community. I completely agree with that, and it's, I'm sure it's like cutting edge, because that's what we do. So thank you so much, Rosa and Greg, for that. I don't like the timing of this. I'm actually a huge John Partey fan, and so, but I just don't, I don't think we're in a good enough position right now to have this concert. I think if it was a little bit farther down the road, and we had more boosters going on, that it would be easier to support. But right now, I just feel like I'm just, I'm nervous about it, and I just don't think that the timing is good. And I am huge, a huge supporter of events, and I want our events to go on. I just think this one is a little bit early yet, until we get a handle on this Delta variant. So that's my opinion, and I appreciate everyone listening. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams. Let me, next up, go back to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. I was, I gotta get off the call. I was, sorry, I was dialed in, and was not made a panelist. So I was talking on my phone, I wasn't using my computer audio. Yeah, I really appreciate, you know, the discussion, and my colleagues' opinions and information they've given out. I've kind of gone back and forth on this one. It's obviously a very difficult decision. The news about Oktoberfest certainly. It's disappointing that we still find ourselves in such a position where, you know, we kind of thought, you know, by summer, you know, we would have some normalcy. That turns out that we haven't quite gotten there yet. As far as this event goes, you know, I think that it's okay, the city, to hold special events if we use every reasonable measure we can to make the event as safe as possible. There's certain things the city obviously can't do, right? We can't scan tickets to make sure they're not counterfeit. We, you know, we can't have contact tracing, because, I mean, we just couldn't afford to do those things. And if we wanted to, logistically, we just wouldn't be able to, right? So what I come back to is, are we doing enough to make sure that it is as safe as possible, given the limited resources that we have, you know, to hold events in our community? With that being said, you know, I would support this event moving forward for individuals that are fully vaccinated. I don't think the bar, I think that if, look, I tested negative for COVID three days ago, therefore I should be able to go to a concert today, you know, during what we're seeing with the Delta variant, during the global pandemic. I don't think that having that policy hurdles that bar. Is this as safe as we could possibly make it? So I would like to see, look, you have to be fully vaccinated to attend this event. The vaccine has been available for, you know, Mayor, you mentioned you got vaccinated back in January. I was vaccinated in February. So it's been seven, six, seven months where the vaccine has largely been available to those who want it. And certainly in the last couple of months, you know, you can walk into a CVS and get the shot and get out in five minutes. So at this point, you know, if you're not vaccinated, I don't think, you know, you necessarily have, you're entitled to be able to attend public events, which you could very well, you know, spread COVID-19 to other people that may have tested negative yesterday, but, or two days ago, but picked it up on their Uber ride, you know, on their way to the concert. So that is one thing I would like to see, if we're going to move forward with this, is say, look, you have to be fully vaccinated, and only fully vaccinated. And there's no real exceptions to that. I don't care when your COVID test was. It's a matter of, you know, setting public policy and setting expectations at this point for me. The other thing I think we should really consider is, let's, I mean, children under 12 are not permitted to get the vaccine. Maybe children under 12 should not be permitted to attend this concert. Again, if this is about public safety, then I would hate to say to a child under 12, look, you can't go, because, you know, unfortunately, the FDA has not approved this vaccine for you yet. I realize that is, that is a bad position to be in for anyone having to do that. But the fact of the matter is, there is a public safety concern around that. And I would hate to see a child under 12 get sick, or, you know, take that back to their school, you know, who they can't wear masks in their school, give it to their teacher, who may already be vaccinated, or may not be vaccinated. But again, it's about controlling the spread of the virus, and doing everything we reasonably can within our means to make this as safe as possible. So I will support this moving forward and continuing on as long as, specifically as long as individuals are fully vaccinated. As far as children under 12, I think that's something we need to consider. I don't know if that's a decision we have to make tonight or not, but if it is, I would certainly appreciate a discussion with our colleagues on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Let me see. Next up, let me circle back to Councilmember Kubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really appreciate the Vice Mayor's discussion topics. And as you all heard, I'm not supportive of this event going forward, but I am really struck by that enhanced mitigation measure. Generally, the Delta variant appears within three to five days of exposure, so you could be tested on one day, and then have the virus the next. So, you know, 72-hour rapid test is, would be a better thing, if we require a rapid test, because you find out immediately that that is a better solution. But I like your suggestion, and I'd like to see if we can go around the bend and ask the rest of council if they would approve that, that we require, just require vaccinations and leave the testing out of it completely, because it is problematic, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor. And also, I think we should restrict it, like nobody under 12. They can't possibly be vaccinated. So if vaccinations are required, it'd be silly to say vaccinations are required, except for kids under 12. You know, that makes no sense. So I think we should have those two conditions put into this, put into this event stipulation, if we can, or going forward. And I'd like to hear from the other council members about that specific issue, to see if there's consensus. And lastly, you know, there's rumblings that, you know, the governor is not going to like what we're doing, and will say that it's, you know, illegal, according to his, to the law that was passed. But we know that law is not effective until September 29th. So we do have to consider that if these stipulation measures are agreed upon, and we're not voting on it, but, you know, there's a sense that we want them to go forward for all future events, that it could likely, you know, be preempted. And I say fight it, you know. We know that other entities, and other school districts, and other cities are fighting the same issue, but I would expect that it wouldn't pass the governor's test, though I think we need to put public health above politics, and, you know, carry on with what we think is the right thing to do. But again, I'd like to see what the rest of council thinks about these two stipulations, which should be no one under 12 admitted, and only proof of vaccination, and leave out the testing window of 72 hours. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kubey. Quick thing on my end, I guess, just sort of responding to the questions. My only issue, and this is more of a question, I guess, probably for our city attorney, Judy Baumann. I don't know if we are allowed to do that. That's the only issue from a legal standpoint, because of the law talking about, you know, requiring proof of vaccination. From my perspective, it seems like the either/or is the way to at least offer people an option, whatever, therefore not making it what is sort of commonly referred to as a vaccine passport. It's a term I don't even like using, quite honestly. But so I don't know, I don't know if we're even allowed to put such a stipulation into agreement like this, but I would, I would obviously kind of look to the city attorney on that. In terms of the stipulation regarding children under 12, I'm fine with that stipulation, if that also, once again, is legally allowable. So with that said, let me see if I can go to our city attorney first, and after that, I'm going to go to Councilmember Adams.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Judy Baumann, city attorney. I am just referencing the public document that was provided by the Attorney General's Office last week. And there does not appear, at this point, to be a prohibition on private businesses requiring vaccinations or proof of vaccinations. You know, the city, as many have talked about, are, you know, hold our special events near and dear. And Tempe is known for many of those, and private businesses apply to Tempe to host events here. But the city is not obligated to host special events put on by private business. And we contract with them through the special event permit for a variety of things, liability insurance, safety and security measures. So at council's direction, certainly private businesses who desire to contract with Tempe to come here and host events could certainly be requested to implement additional measures. I would, I would ask that they chat with their own attorneys, certainly, and I believe that they would need to be requiring some type of reasonable accommodation provision, but they would otherwise be able to do such a thing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Let me go to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, Judy, did you answer the question about the 12 and under for the kids? That would be okay for us to ban them?
Thank you, Councilmember. We have not looked at that issue on behalf of private businesses. As I understand it, they can require proof of vaccines. And if vaccinations are not available to a certain segment of the population, again, they may need to make reasonable accommodation, but I'd have to defer to their council.
Okay, because I like the idea of everyone that's vaccinated can attend the concert, and you show proof of vaccination. I think, you know, the rest of us, I mean, everyone that's gotten vaccinated, I mean, I would like to be able to do more things than we're able to right now. But unfortunately, we have people that are resisting the vaccines for whatever reason. But I would be very comfortable, much more comfortable, in fact, with making everyone show proof of vaccination before entering that concert. And I agree with Councilmember, or I'm sorry, with Vice Mayor Keating, that, you know, you could get, you could get exposed on the way to the concert in an Uber car. It just, the whole thing is too risky for me to accept. So, but I would, I can compromise with everyone needing to be vaccinated to attend that concert. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other council members, any comments or questions? Let's see, Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. So my one thing is, I wasn't quite sure whether Judy says we can prohibit children under 12, but it does make sense to me that we would be able to, because restaurants do it, not necessarily bars, but there are, you know, children-free restaurants, children-free resorts, and things like that. So can we just get that clarified? Like, is that something that the city could do, or the vendor could do as a private business? Does other businesses do that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We can commit to looking into that, but we don't, we have not looked at that issue specifically.
Thank you.
Rosa, do you have something else, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for clarity for the staff, that if it's vaccinations, but if they have a medical exemption, or any type of exemption that is approved by law, right? Because not everyone can get vaccinated, that they would have to show proof of a negative test. I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record. Is that correct, Judy?
I'm sorry, I don't know, Rosa. I was looking based off the, I apologize. I'm looking at the information that you all provided this evening.
Well, I just know that some people, because of medical reasons, are not able to get the vaccine. And I just wanted to make sure that we were being open and transparent, that if they are not able to, for medical reasons, for the exemption, like religious exemptions, but medical exemptions for vaccinations, that we would require a negative test.
So I believe that that is the proposal that was submitted. And as I understand it, private businesses, if they do require vaccinations or proof of vaccinations, they would be required to make reasonable accommodations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other member of council, any comments or questions? Let's go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, Mayor. I really appreciate the suggestions from Vice Mayor Keating with the vaccinations, requiring vaccinations. I also, you know, support the idea of not allowing the kids that cannot get shots to not be able to participate. I do think that that is a safety thing. So Vice Mayor Keating, thank you so much for bringing that idea and that thought forward. I just have one question. Are, is this, are we discussing this just as a concert moving forward, or is this part of the guidelines that we are, special event guidelines that we are trying to work on also?
Council, sorry, was that a question, Councilmember Garland? Just want to make sure I got that.
I'm sorry. No, I was, are we discussing this as having, people have to be fully vaccinated? Are we doing this specifically, because we're talking about this concert? Or are we, is this in reference to the special events guidelines and this concert, or one or the other? I just want to kind of be clear in my head.
I guess I see Keith. I'll look to him, since he's on camera there, to see if he can respond to Councilmember Garland's question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Garland. And obviously, the feedback that we received tonight, we would take it back and get direction and change if we need to change and add to the mediation strategies, particularly for the concert, or just in general, depending on what council and you guys, the mayor, decide tonight, in reference to moving events forward. Obviously, the concert itself is quicker than some of the other events that are coming down the line. I'm not sure if we have too many others that are in that large gated category that are the next few months, you know, compared to the concert. But that's something we would still communicate out, communicate about, and come back to Mayor and council with other questions if needed. So just, Mr. Mayor, whatever you guys give us as far as direction, I will go back and update and follow up with Judy to clarify, so we can let the promoter know whether or not it's something that he can do or not do, depending on the extra stipulations that are put on for requirements for 12 and under or not.
Thank you, Keith.
Quick question, actually, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Navarro after this. I guess this question's probably for Keith or for Rosa. There was some, I think, some language that was added in at the end, that kind of gave an escape clause, I guess, for lack of a better term, to the city, if for whatever reason, you know, we, you know, we come up to the, closer to the event, and we obviously deem that it's no longer safe to have. And I know there's different definitions of safe, and how we all kind of define that as a council and as a community. But wasn't there some kind of stipulation that was added in, like, towards the end of the process, that kind of spoke to that? And if there is, could you explain that a little bit further?
I would turn to, oh, go ahead, Rosa.
I was going to say, this is a question that Keith and I discussed, and Keith can probably answer it, because we were discussing this very thing there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was turned to Judy as well, for just legal counsel, because I know, you know, as we came across events in the spring, some of the things that decisions we had to make, and where that put us in reference to providing a permit, and, you know, as far as legality from the city, from that health standpoint, and health and safety concerns for the community. So I thought it was a decision that if the city deemed that the time, if things get to a point where we needed to change some of the permits, or cancel some of the permits for events, that we could do so, based on the reasonable situations of things being worse, as far as the transmission getting even higher.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it. Let me go to Let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Just for clarity, if, if the event was not to go on, what legal ramifications are we up against? And then I have another question after that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. And if the council prefers to vote to adjourn to go into executive discussion, executive session, you can have a more robust discussion with respect to potential legal challenges and defenses and issues that we have looked at in this context. I think that in the realm of special events, generally, you would be most concerned with promoters or concert organizers who wish to hold an event here, who have to settle for holding an event elsewhere if they're not able to meet the event criteria, but that's certainly just one of the considerations.
Mayor, can I suggest we go into each session?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Navarro, let me see, I'm going to look to the city attorney for direction on that. Do I, since this is not a meeting where we're taking formal votes, can I just, as the chair, adjourn the meeting and go into executive session, or do I need some kind of a motion and a second here?
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, I believe the posting on the agenda and under the open meeting law would require that the council vote to adjourn, so if there was a motion, you could certainly take a motion and a vote on that.
Sure.
And then we can go into executive session and come back.
Okay. Councilmember Navarro, would you like to put a motion on the table?
Yeah, a motion to go to the executive session.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Let's see, I will go ahead and do a roll call vote based on my screen. Councilmember, Councilmember Garland?
Yes.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams? Was that a yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember QB?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keating? Vice Mayor Keating? Okay, I vote yes as well, so we will go ahead and adjourn into executive session and come back as soon as we're done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know, we will need for the clerk to send out a meeting notice. We didn't have a Teams meeting yet created for this executive session, so I would just ask council to look in your inbox here shortly at your computer for the Teams invite coming to you shortly.
Sounds good, and it sounds like Carla just did, so I think it should already be in your inbox, council. Cool. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thanks, everyone. See you in executive session. We're going to go ahead and resume the city council work-study session here. We are, for the public, we are on item 2C, which is special events COVID-19 guideline update. I want to look to Vice Mayor Keating for comment.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mayor, at this point, I think I'm comfortable giving direction, seeing if there's consensus amongst leagues on it. With regards to the upcoming concert, you know, I do want to move forward with this with, with the requirement that all attendees be vaccinated, given that those under 12 cannot receive the vaccine, they would be excluded from being able to attend this concert, unfortunately. But I do think it's, you know, it's the best thing to do in public health, and I think it's the easiest solution to make sure, as I said earlier, we're reaching the bar of doing everything we reasonably can to provide the safest environment that we can. I think acquiring the vaccination to attend the concert, you know, in Tempe public property is the way to go. As far as direction for future events, I would like to have the vaccine be a requirement for all gated or ticketed events in the city of Tempe until further notice, until at which time the data shows that we can relax those, those, that requirement. I don't know what that is, like, as far as, like, what that baseline number is or anything like that, so we'll let staff work on that in the meantime, but for now, moving forward, I think people that want to throw gated or ticketed events in the city of Tempe are going to have to be vaccinated in order to attend those events. That also goes for TCA as well. Any event indoors at TCA, certainly we would require a vaccine to attend those as well. Again, so removing the 72-hour COVID test option, you know, for the reasons I stated earlier, as far as you need to pick that up in a day or two, you can pick it up on your, on your way to the event, so vaccine is the way to go to maintain the best public health in the city, so I hope our colleagues agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I next see Councilmember Adams' hand.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also completely agree with what Randy just said, or I'm sorry, what Vice Mayor said, Keating, and I just want to move forward with this issue. I think it's the best solution for the situation. So thank you, Vice Mayor Keating, for your suggestion and excellent summary.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with that, that Vice Mayor's quick thinking on his feet, and the really good ideas to improve the mitigation efforts. I still don't approve of hosting this event. I don't believe we should be having this event, but I do think the measures are strengthened, the mitigation measures are strengthened, and I support those, those enhancements. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, quick question on my end. I am not allowed to add an amendment as the chair, am I?
Mayor, since you all are coming to a consensus, you can certainly recommend something to your colleagues for them to consider in this context.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, the only, so, yeah, definitely have heard the, you know, basically kind of a motion and a second here. My, my request would be to add the day-of onsite rapid test to the menu of options that we have, along with the proof of vaccination, as sort of a second option, since, you know, since I know, you know, there might be some concern about the notion of the 72-hour, that someone could get a test three days before and then be exposed within, you know, set 24 to 48 hours, so I would like to try to add a stipulation in there about, sort of an amendment regarding a rapid test, you know, day-of onsite, but I will go around and see what the pleasure of council is with that, to see if that actually is something people want to take up or not. Councilmember Garland?
You know, I, I completely agree in Vice Mayor Keating's suggestion and idea. I think that's, it's wonderful, and I, and Mayor, I also like the idea that you had just mentioned about having the day-of testing, and one of the things that I like about that is, is that, you know, we had said that there are some people that are going to say, you know, might not be able to take, might not be able to get vaccines. This is a way for us to be able to test those people before they go in, to make sure that they have, if they do not have proof of vaccine, that they at least get tested, and we know that they're safe before they go in. It will add a layer of time for people to get into the concert, because it does take, I think, 15 minutes to get the results back, but again, I think it's just another one of those steps that we could take to make our community safer, so I'd like to combine both your thoughts and those of Vice Mayor Keating's. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members? Any thoughts on that?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, I can agree with your stipulation.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Anyone else?
Excuse me, Mayor, I was going to seek clarification.
Yes.
For behalf of staff, I just wanted to make sure that the council direction is, with respect to large gated events, is summarized in the memo from staff.
Yes, I would agree. Based on Vice Mayor Keating's motion, yes, it would be for large, so it's large ticketed gated events.
Great. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, if I got that wrong, please correct me.
No, Mayor, you're correct, but I do want to speak to your suggestion of rapid testing.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm not sure if you guys can hear me or not. Okay, good. Look, I mean, that, you know, as, as I previously, I'm worried about the logistics of that. If it is, if the vendor or a future vendor is willing to take that up, and they want to have a rapid test, and people have, like, a little shady area they can sit in to prove they don't have COVID in that moment, I am okay with that. I do think, I do think it's not as clean as just a flat-out vaccine requirement, but if that's the direction the council wants to go in, I am okay with that, assuming that they can work out the logistics and it's not on the city to do so. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other council members, any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, it's QB.
Yes, Councilmember QB.
Yeah, I just, I have a problem thinking about the logistics, and I think it complicates things, and for future events, maybe it's something you want to add, but I think adding it to this event is going to just increase the complexity, and I'm worried about, I'm worried about all that, so I don't really support that amendment. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Let's see, any other council members, comments, questions? I think we have four on that.
So Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking we were 3-3, but I guess, guess I'm mistaken. Is it yourself, Councilmember Garland, Councilmember Navarro?
Yes. Okay, so you were saying?
And then me.
I would like to-
I think we're split 3-3 on the rapid testing.
Okay, okay, no, sorry. Vice Mayor, I misunderstood your comments then. So you were saying that you are okay with allowing for, and correct me if I'm wrong, you are okay with allowing for the rapid test, whatever, provided it's something that is sort of taken on by the promoter, not necessarily by the city?
Yeah, I guess I wasn't speaking very clearly. What I was trying to say is, I thought that this was going to be, I thought I was going to be the only one against it, honestly, so I was trying to be like, look, I don't like this idea, I think it's cumbersome, however, like, if you guys want to do it, you know, at the end of the day, it's not something I'm going to, you know, die on my sword. If we're coming down to, well, we don't vote, but we speak our opinion, I'm going to have to say no for the rapid testing then.
Okay, okay, no, thank you. I appreciate that. Let me go to Councilmember Adams.
I agree with Vice, Vice Mayor Keating. I, I'm saying no to the, the rapid test also. I think it's a legit, logistically, really a difficult thing to put into place, and I think people will get really angry and frustrated with it. Thank you.
Okay, so that makes it 3-3, so that motion, that motion dies. Yes.
Mayor, I don't think you got my vote.
Did you? You said, you said yes to the rapid test, didn't you, or?
Yeah, can I, oh, I must have did that, yeah, but can I have one word?
Yes, well, absolutely, what?
And then the reason why I like, I would entertain keeping it open, I think if in coordination with the promoter and the city, if they can figure out a plan how that rapid test will work, and maybe there has to be a cutoff time, you know, X amount of, an hour or two before the concert starts, I'm open for that negotiation, as long as logistically it can be done thoughtfully, but that's, in my opinion, I think that's just, just gives a little more latitude to help get this concert possibly going, but at the same time, we're being responsible and making sure that it is a COVID-free event, so I kind of leave it as an option, in my opinion, as long as logistically it can be thought out and done with, without aggravation, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I certainly understand what Councilmember Navarro is coming to, and I, I certainly, I do want us to be as inclusive as we possibly can, but I also know that the city is pushing an aggressive, you know, vaccine goal, and the whole point is to encourage vaccinations, and at some point, we got to say enough is enough, you can get vaccinated, again, that's just my opinion, so that's why I'm opposing the rapid testing as well. Another reason. Thank you.
I'm not going to die on this order, Bear.
Okay. No worries. All right, so, you know, going, going back to just, you know, sort of the direction that I heard here, it sounds like it's a 3-3, so the meaning that, that right now, that motion is not going to go forward. So we would go back to then Vice Mayor Keating's initial, you know, initial sort of policy that he put on the table, whatever, saying that a proof of vaccination will be required to enter the concert.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll just quickly go around the, I'll see Councilmember Adams.
Agree with, with Vice Keating, Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to add, really good point, and thank you, right on Randy, right on Vice Mayor Keating, you made a real excellent point, but if we did add the rapid testing, we would then complicate the whole issue with kids, because if you have to be vaccinated, that means 12 and under can't attend, because they can't get vaccinated right now, so if you're rapid testing, then you have to say, okay, can kids come if they're rapid tested? So it just confuses things a lot, but, yeah, so I, I support the motion, well, we're not voting, but my consensus, Randy's ideas. Thank you. Although I still don't want to see this event happen.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Navarro?
No, I'm just trying to get my screen to go back. I'm in the dark.
Oh.
I can't turn off my mic, is what I'm trying to tell you.
No worries. I'll go to Councilmember Garland, no worries.
Okay, since the other idea was taken off, I'm, I am, I will support Vice Mayor Keating's idea. I, you know, I, I still think it would be, you know, a good idea to allow the rapid testing, but, you know, Councilmember QB made a good point that, you know, that would then maybe complicate things with specifically requiring or allowing the children to come in, which is one of the things that we were worried about, so, yep, so I support what Vice Keating was saying, Vice Mayor Keating was saying, so thank you.
Okay, great. Let me go to Andrew, our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Just to clarify on the direction consensus, vaccination, I assume, means fully vaccinated, which means that you have proof that you received either the two doses of those that require two doses or the one, a sufficient time period prior to the start of the concert. In other words, 14 days typically, I think, I remember correctly, prior to, just, if that's not the case, I, I think either way, we want to be able to give as much clarity to staff and the promoter on this point.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilmember QB?
That is an excellent, I support that. We really do want it to be clear.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, in, in theory, yes, you know, I would like that too, but I think what I'm trying to get to is the simple, the simplest solution, so as long as they've received both doses of, if it requires two, if they have the Moderna or Pfizer, and one dose is Johnson &amp; Johnson, I don't care what the time period is in between, you know, if it's only been a couple of days or whatever, I realize that means that the vaccine won't be, it won't be as fully immune as they should be, but, you know, at some point, I just want to kind of make it as easy, as easy as we can on city staff and event staff to continue to move forward to this event, to still have their event, and, you know, we can't, I just, to Councilmember QB's point earlier about, you know, who's going to be policing all this, and who's going to be checking the cards, and, you know, trying to figure out dates in their head at the door, it might, it might just be, while certainly a noble idea, it might be too complex of a solution. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, so it sounds like the direction, whatever, I think, Mr. City Manager, is to, is to go forward with the concert, only if people, attendees must be fully vaccinated to attend the concert. It seems like that's the direction on that item, unless anyone else has any comments or questions. All right, hearing none. Is there anything that staff would like to add with respect to that direction? I would probably look to either to our deputy city manager, Rosa Nchowsky, or our community services director, Keith Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then I turn over to Rosa, but I know, in reference to the efforts of trying to get people vaccinated, making the effort that Vice Mayor Keating proposed there, it seems like a helpful opportunity to at least keep the campaign going for this event, getting people vaccinated, you know, with the card in their hand, and the process started, so that, that's what, you know, I would recommend if possible, but understand, just wanted to get clarification.
So you're saying just, you know, you need, it's just sort of basically to carry out what the council's requesting here, the staff just needs as much flexibility as possible to ensure that this can be done, you know, efficaciously?
I'll let Rosa speak specifically to the vaccination effort and that, that partnership that we wanted to do with the promoter.
Oh, I think we're, I'm clear, Mayor. Thank you for asking. I think the clarification regarding fully vaccinated is fine, and we have enough direction to move forward.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Okay, sounds good. Alright, anyone else? Any comments or questions?
Hi, Mayor, this is Councilmember Garland.
Yes.
So again, I, going back to the special events guidelines, this is also then, um, being applied to the special events guidelines regarding the large gated events also, is that correct?
Uh, ye- yes, that, that was, that was my assumption from the, uh, the conversation, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I guess, yeah, for, for large gated ticketed events, I think is what we discussed, so absolutely, I should probably just make that clarification. So, but thank you, Councilmember Garland.
Um, Mayor, I would like to say, I would like to say gated and/or ticketed, because if you're selling a ticket, there's, there's gonna be some sort of, um, ambitions process in which a vaccine card could be checked.
Okay, um, yeah, that's, that is definitely a difference, um, I'm gonna have to kind of go around and talk about, and, and just kind of, give me a second here.
Oui.
Okay, so, my, my preference, if, if, if going in this direction, whatever, would be for, would be for, um, would be for ticketed and gated, not ticketed or gated. Um, so that's where I'm at on that. Uh, Vice Mayor Keating is saying gated or ticketed. So, um.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Navarro.
Sorry, can't figure out where the hands at, but, um, if it's a qualifier for entry into the concert, ticketed, bought the ticket, or if you can't show your proof of, of, of COVID, does this kind of nullify both? You have to show your proof of COVID with a ticket. Buy it at the gate, have it bought already.
Well, I thi- I, I think part of it, and I could be wrong here, and I could, I could look to the Vice Mayor, but I think part of it would also be that people were looking, were talking about events even beyond the cons, uh, the concert, whatever, I mean, unless Vice Mayor Keating, if I'm getting that wrong, please correct me, but is that we were talking about kind of a policy for events, even, you know, including the concert, but also beyond the concert?
You're correct, Mayor, that's what I was, that was what I was going for.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go back to Councilmember Navarro, kind of knowing that, um, just wanted to check and see kind of what your perspective is.
Yeah, I, you know, and like I said, this is a fluid thing, right? Um, so we don't know what, you know, a month from now is gonna happen, if it goes up or goes down, and so, you know, a conversation, I, I guess, you know, obviously would have to dictate, you know, that moment, but if we're saying if things are at this level or going up, yeah, we can, we can go that route. So I guess there's a, another conversation possibly, uh, to this stipulation, I guess, I, I don't know, I, I'm open for a discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Navarro, anyone else want to weigh in? Councilmember Cubey?
Yes, I support Vice Mayor Keating's position on this. If you have to buy a ticket, show a ticket, then you should have to show your vaccine card until further notice, right? We'll use metrics to determine when that notice stops and when we change that policy. I think that, you know, we also think we're protecting our staff, let's think about staff at TCA, we're protecting them from being, um, exposed to the virus, so it's, it's a good thing, it has a multiplier effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Adams?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I also agree that, uh, they have to be, um, required to show vaccination, um, to ticketed events. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else want to weigh in?
Hi, Mayor, this is Councilmember Garland. Um, so then going back, again, going back to the special events guideline, um, that was presented to us, so then, what this would do is it would be ticketed events, it would be like the non-gated or small gated events, including festivals, markets, parades, block parties, and large gated events, I'm just, I'm ju, I'm trying to keep going back to the guidelines, because I know that's what we're supposed to be kind of giving direction on. So that, so all of those things, including the TCA, would all be considered events.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I could be wrong, I mean, but I can actually look to Keith for clarification, I don't believe so, because I think things like the, um, the boat parade, or the fantasy of lights, that, you know, are not ticketed events, they're just events that people walk in, so.
That's right, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay, great, thank you.
So with, with that said, Councilmember Garland, are you comfortable with the, um, with the suggestion that Council, that Vice Mayor Keating laid out then?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, and that's the case, then we have consensus on that item as well. Um, staff, any, any comments or questions on your end?
Not for me, Mayor.
Thank you, I think we have clarification in reference to move forward for the TCA and the large gated events that are ticketed and gated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright. Um, moving on then, uh, I guess we're gonna go to item two A, which is the Right to Breathe Financial Inclusion Update, and I'm gonna go ahead and call upon, uh, Jonay Harrison, who's our Equity and Inclusion Manager, and I believe Scott Scifax from Scifax Strategic Solutions, who's our consultant, is also with us tonight, so I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you so much, um, for, for having us. I know, based on the hour, I wanted to let Council know that um, we do not unfortunately have, uh, Scott Scifax with us this evening. Unfortunately, he had to join another meeting at this hour, but I am sufficiently prepared, uh, and the update and presentation was primarily, um, with me, so the purpose of today's agenda item is to update Council on the progress made on the Right to Breathe Initiative. Uh, the memo that was submitted to Council has our full list of partners in this initiative, but for purposes of this update, the Financial Inclusion Update specifically, the partners that the Strategic Management and Diversity Office has been working with are the City Attorney's Office, the Finance Department, the Economic Development Department, and Human Services. Uh, this effort falls under Council Priority Quality of Life, with Performance Measure 3.31, as well as Council Priority Financial Stability and Vitality, Performance Measure 5.16. There is absolutely no fiscal impact or impact to current resources, as this initiative has already been budgeted um, under the Strategic Management and Diversity Office. As a reminder, Council presented, uh, was presented with the Right to Breathe Initiative over a year ago, and thankfully, and to your, uh, your, um, great commendation, you all approved the Right to Breathe unanimously. As a brief reminder and overview, the Right to Breathe has three components, Failure Analysis, Data, and Financial Inclusion. Failure Analysis, reminding the Council, is around how have we not just had fatal encounters with our youth of color and youth from vulnerable communities, uh, of Tempe, but how have we failed to encounter? As you see outlined in the memorandum, all of the departments represented in that memorandum have done an amazing job doing the hard work of an internal analysis of their policies, their programs and procedures, and how that can be improved or strengthened, truly a SWOT analysis. For the data component of the Right to Breathe, uh, all of the departments are also looking at their data lakes and where they have data that we can use to effectively forecast and measure where trends of action are happening in our community, but also looking at some of our external partners and stakeholders that are also great sources of data and different information to help us with that measure. But then the third, um, uh, component of the Right to Breathe Financial Inclusion, that is where we specifically are today in this session, uh, and for that, we're looking at Performance Measure 3.31. Currently, 3.31 says that our city will attempt to achieve a rate of households living below the federal poverty level of less than Maricopa County, as measured by the U.S. Census Bureau, the ACS, that's the American Community Survey. The target that we're trying to achieve is 15% by 2030, and Tempe currently is at 19.8%. So we have a little bit to go, but that is the rate as of the 2021 ACS survey. On this screen, Council will see multiple numbers, I know that you all are aware of all of them, but I want to draw your attention to four numbers in particular. The median age of Tempe residents is 28.1, what does that mean to Council? That means we have a relatively young and blossoming population of residents that really have the capacity within Bell Curve to be great contributors to the city. And of those, uh, demographics, we're also looking at 44% of your residents are BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color community, with, uh, 16% being foreign, born in 74 language spoken. So when we're looking at the nature of the residents and, and the, uh, the Right to Breathe component, these are extremely important to look at how we present in a both culturally competent and also culturally humble way. But for financial inclusion specifically, the most important number that I'd like to draw the Council's attention to is that poverty rate. You heard me mention that in the first slide. Tempe has a poverty rate of 19.8%. However, the national rate is 13.7. Uh, we, when we look at numbers, oftentimes people say, oh, that's close, but the real question that is presented to us as staff and to you as Council is that for every number difference between 19.8 and 13.7, those are actual lives that we can affect. The next slide you see is what's called.
Mr. Mayor, sorry I had my hand up, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, Councilmember Cubey, sorry about that.
Thank you, Jonay, I just want to ask about the poverty rate, so the child poverty rate is even higher than that, am I right?
I don't have the child poverty rate called out, Councilmember Cubey, but I certainly can make a note, uh, to include what that rate is, I don't want to misspeak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that addition. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have my, uh, screen showing for WebEx, and so I ask for Mr. Mayor and Council, if there is an interruption, please stop me because I can't see you, so, thank you, uh, Councilmember Cubey for that question.
Sounds good, you got it, Jonay.
Alright, uh, moving forward, looking here at the cost burden household, what you see is what is defined as a cost burden, the definition is promulgated by the HUD Department, the Federal Department, our federal agency, and, um, cost burden is defined as those households who pay more than 30% of their monthly income towards housing. So when we're looking at between extremely low, very low, and low income, that's one of the definitions of vulnerable populations within the Right to Breathe. You see that that last information was updated in 2018. You all know based on the census, and census coming out with 2021 information, it was a little bit delayed based on projections, and so as soon as that information is updated, but what we do know is we're looking at a significant number of cost burden households within the city of Tempe. The reason I'd like to contextualize that is because when you consider Maslow's hierarchy of needs, the very fundamental, the basic need is a physiological need, that's air, water, food, shelter, clothing, sleep. And from there, that bottom layer, the next is safety needs. Love and belonging is the third highest, then esteem, and then self-actualization. Housing burden really means within the context of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that there are a basic need for food, clothing, medical care, and transportation. The need for housing is fundamental, and we cannot actually be effective within the Right to Breathe. The Right to Breathe being an ability to thrive, our youth of color and our youth of, from vulnerable communities, being able to thrive in our community and reach their self-actualization, the best version of themselves, unless we also, uh, direct our efforts strategically and intentionally to, um, basic needs such as, as housing. So what you see also in this, uh, slide is that Tempe's housing cost burden is second highest only to the city of Glendale. The next slide will show you that about 41.7% of Tempe residents fall between those categories of extremely low to low, uh, needing housing units. Again, 41.7% need housing within the city, falling within the extremely low to low category. But that also means if you flip it within the context of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, is that 41.7% of our residents are focused simply on the most basic need in order to survive in our city. So what does that mean for our components of financial inclusion? Under the Right to Breathe, the financial inclusion aspect has five different strategies, which city staff are either currently pursuing or considering pursuing, and that is the point of today's presentation. Those five are there for you, uh, on this slide, and I will briefly go over all of them. This is not the work of Strategic Management Diversity Office only, this is the work of the Human Services Department, the Economic Development Department, uh, Strategic Management Department, uh, City Attorney's Office, as I've said, Community Services Department, and I am so proud to report that we are collaborating, we are all putting our greatest amount of energy and effort to yield the best results that we can for our residents, and it has been a tremendous effort by all of our staff for this, and I'm so proud to work with them in, in pursuing what's best for our, our youth of color and youth from vulnerable communities. So digging in the Financial Inclusion Index, what you'll see in this, this effort is actually being spearheaded by Strategic Management Diversity's own, Wydell Homes. Uh, this particular measure falls under Council Priority Financial Stability and Vitality Performance Measure 5.16. What does that say specifically? That the city will achieve financial inclusion indicators that are equal to or better than state-level targets as measured and benchmarked by our very own Financial Inclusion Index. This is a snapshot of a potential Financial Inclusion Index. The baseline and target measurements for this index are underway, as I said, we have some strategies that are already underway, some that are still being developed, and some that are being explored. This is one that is being developed, but we're well underway of looking at some of the elements. What you see here highlighted, though, are really those things that the staff have been able to sink their teeth into and identify as actionable items that we can pursue immediately. The next strategy before you is our Financial Navigator Program. The Financial Navigator Program is a cohort-based, grant-funded program initiative that began in response to COVID-19 in order to provide financial management guidance and resources to all Tempe community members. Tempe is the first cities for financial empowerment, that's CFE. Tempe is the first city under CFE to have a program in Arizona. This program facilitates the city's rapid deployment of financial empowerment resources as part of an emergency response and economic recovery efforts. Uh, it collaborates with community-based nonprofit organizations and city agency partners to remotely serve residents. Uh, the Financial Navigators provide structured guidance remotely that will help residents prioritize their financial concerns and mitigate disruptions of their cash flow. I am so happy to report, as you see these three entities here, Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Tempe's own, Tempe Human Services, and CARE7. This is under the leadership of Deputy Director Octavia Harris, under Human Services, doing a phenomenal job, already achieving outcomes and wins, and those wins that we can already report under her leadership as one full-time employee that has been designated as a Financial Navigator. But since July 31st, 2021, the goal of this program was to have 1,200 sessions between July 31st and now, that is two months only, uh, no, I apologize, that's one month. The city has already conducted 1,000 sessions. Again, 1,000 sessions out of 1,200 as our goal. Phenomenally, phenomenally doing an amazing job with, uh, connecting people to resources and really helping our residents, our most vulnerable residents, that the Right to Breathe is targeting, avoid financial catastrophe. Also, a win to report under this strategy is that, uh, the city of Tempe has been awarded additional funding to support the program for an additional six months through February of 2022. of two thousand and twenty-two. Ultimately, with this level of win, with this level of attack and true approach to directly serve, the city of Tempe can act as a model for other cohort cities to truly engage and serve college students, formerly incarcerated, all of the individual communities that we see as vulnerable.
Hello and welcome to the very first episode of Veterans AZ, a show that celebrates veterans across the great state of Arizona and highlights their stories and accomplishments. In the months ahead, we will speak with some amazing people who have served our nation and others who serve them from the many wonderful organizations that support the veterans in our community. My name is Kelly Corset, and I am proud to be your host. I come from a family of veterans and was honored to serve in the United States Navy before beginning my municipal career. My day job is heading up communications and citizen service for the city of Scottsdale. Scottsdale, like many communities in the Valley, has a Veterans Advisory Commission, a group of residents appointed by the city council to advise the council about veterans' issues in the community. One priority that group set was to do more to inform and educate people about veterans and about the programs and services available to them. And that brings us to this program, Veterans AZ This Video Series, which we will also release as a podcast, will do just that, inform, educate, and celebrate on behalf of veterans in the Valley. Thank you for joining us. We are releasing this first episode of Veterans AZ on a very special day. March twenty-nine is National Vietnam War Veterans Day, which was established in two thousand and twelve as the one day each year that we specifically honor and thank veterans who served in the longest conflict in U.S. history.
We're gathered today, just as we have gathered before, to remember those who served, those who fought, and those who-
Expert Brad Willows from CFE. The goal, as you see, is outlined at the top of this slide, but ultimately, all of our attention and efforts are going to be based on the right, which is releasing that pink column, releasing our city's blueprint. What does that look like for the city of Tempe specifically? This city start Technical Assistant Grant has helped us to look at our needs, address the impact of COVID nineteen, receive the technical assistance, as we've already talked about. But overall, the city of Tempe blueprint will focus on increasing access and removing barriers. Again, increasing access and removing barriers around financial resources and information from underrepresented and BIPOC communities. That is the heartbeat of the families of the right to breathe. Residents and businesses are also included in this business blueprint because it is an entire ecosystem of how we're doing our financial inclusion strategies. So it's not an either or. Instead, it is an and and both. This blueprint ties together three key financial empowerment strategies, as we've identified. Affordable housing and homeownership is the first strategy. The second strategy is access to financial institutions. And the third strategy is attacking and tackling poverty rate and income inequality. I keep saying they, and I keep saying partners. Those that are actively working and pursuing this particular strategy are, of course, the Strategic Management and Diversity Office, the Human Services Department, and the Economic Development Department. The outcomes that we're looking to achieve from this would be operationalized by that Financial Inclusion Index that you saw several slides back, and performance measures tied to these outcomes and tied to these strategies. That Financial Inclusion Index will have dimensions of financial assets and income, businesses and jobs, homeownership and housing, healthcare and education. Those are some of those targeted wording you saw highlighted on the previous slide. But most importantly, the blueprint will be part of our Tempe Accelerates this fall as it's being completed. The fourth strategy is social determinants of health. This is a joint initiative under the auspices of Human Services and Community Services Department, and is being facilitated by Paul Bentley, our Deputy Director of Human Services, doing an amazing job. Again, these ongoing meetings, trying to clearly dial down and drive what we're doing for the social determinants of health. There are key partners in this initiative. Those partners that are currently working on our social determinants of health, in addition to Human Services and Community Services, as well as Strategic Management and Diversity Office, are Redemption Tempe, Arizona Healthy Communities, the Tempe Community Council, and Vitalist Health Foundation. When we look at the social determinants of health specifically, on this side, you will see two national models. One put forth by Vitalist Health Foundation on the left side, that's local to Arizona, and the other national model set forth by the Kaiser Family Foundation. We looked at two models led again and facilitated by really in-depth details and digging through the facilitation of Paul Bentley of models that will help us define what are the Tempe specific social determinants of health? What are the elements that the city of Tempe needs to have and ensure and sustain a healthy community? You see that there's overlaps in these two models. Though the naming is different, you look at overlaps, for example, in education and food. The partners for this initiative jointly decided that the model on the left, the Vitalist model, was the best model for us to build our foundation on as a Tempe community, and that was for two reasons primarily. The first is because it was an evidence-based model that can be pointed to metrics and measured. The second was that it was an interdisciplinary approach based on our needs, and it was most in alignment with Tempe's specific needs. So we will be working with those partners moving forward in order to come up with what I call the meat on the bones. What are the outcomes that the city will have for our social determinants of health? What are the things that we are looking to achieve for the city specifically? Our final measure and our final strategy that is being explored, it is being explored with our consultants. Scott Syfax, as again I said, unfortunately, was here until about six o'clock, but had to get off to attend another meeting, is the community reinvestment model. Now, what do we mean by a community reinvestment model? That is an intentional and strategic investment model that creates an ecosystem of development for the Tempe community. That's not just a housing model, but it's housing tied to economic development and wraparound or supportive services for the individuals and families of the city, those vulnerable populations, those BIPOC community members as well that are the subject to the right to breathe. This, again, is a collaborative initiative that requires the collaboration, partnership, and thought leadership of multiple departments across the city, but also, and most importantly, it centers community voices in moving forward. Financial inclusion from the right to breathe means that we are expanding our efforts from just stabilizing households to ensuring that Tempe's vulnerable youth and their families get on the road to building generational wealth and thriving in both good and challenging times. Mr. Mayor and Council, we saw that acutely, we're continuing to see that acutely as a result of the pandemic, as a result of seeing that those restaurants, those small businesses, those BIPOC-owned businesses, those women in women-led households that were most desperately impacted by COVID need to be able to thrive in both good and hard or challenging times. So the question is begged of us as a city is what can we do to support not just housing, but the overall thriving of our community? So we're looking at considering everything from financial behavioral wellness programming to the housing counseling that we're already doing, homeownership. Then also, how do we expand on those models to models such as providing guidance and training in areas such as wills and powers of attorney to keep and build wealth? All of these are tools that can be used in totality to build the wealth of our most vulnerable residents. Without these tools, again, unforeseen emergencies and hurdles can be devastating to our families. So we're looking at ways to provide the tools that connect our housing and wraparound services that are proximate to housing. So let's get into that specifically. As you see, the goals for community reinvestment are threefold. For the goals for an expanded model, an expanded community reinvestment model are three fun- threefold, to bring injection of funds to the community, funds that are proximate to our affordable housing existing and future development, and rectify those common models that have been done in other cities and areas in the nation that we have seen that I'm calling modern redlining. So what does that mean? Let's go briefly. Redlining refers to those lenders that have designated areas where lending was and was not permissible in certain communities, and that affected primarily those BIPOC families. That effectively created zones where there was no investment of dollars into neighborhoods. Modern redlining, therefore, is when banks, we know that legally, redlining is not permitted, and so banks have done away with the old model of redlining. But modern redlining perpetuates poverty in neighborhoods by providing housing that keeps low-income residents in exclusively low-income areas and neighborhoods. This was done in cities where there are only subsidized housing and no supportive or wraparound services that were located in proximity to that housing. Examples of that, that modern redlining, can be seen in old models or common models in cities like Chicago or New York or New Orleans that you see subsidized housing, but no proximate quality grocery stores or safe recreational activities. All of the things that we know have been identified as those elements necessary for healthy communities. Again, a healthy community, we saw in our previous slide, has multiple aspects connected to it, not just housing. So to avoid modern redlining, the city of Tempe is looking at how do we advance the efforts that are already underway by our Human Services and Housing Departments, the way that they're already looking at putting housing and supportive services together, but put those efforts on steroids by injecting additional capital. So what does that look like? An example would be, I love to give an example that you all can really dig your teeth into. So let's look at one of our affordable housing multifamily developments that the city has or is considering in the future. That means that injection of capital happens next to an affordable housing multifamily unit, but there's also funding for a workforce development site. There is funding for possibly job childcare located in the bottom of that multifamily development. There's transportation hubs that connect individuals in that area to their future jobs within the city or outside of the city. There's grocery stores that we see healthy food options. Again, all of those social determinants of health that the city, by considering a community reinvestment model, is taking it upon themselves and the onus to put all of these services, housing, economic development, community development, wraparound service, tied together in our neighborhoods. This is all made possible by the city being intentional and strategic in how we're doing our investment in development, vis a vis all of these models working together. So let's break that down into parts. Historically, we've had this continuum of housing resources that has been a powerful evolution to address the community's housing and real estate development needs. Again, we're focusing on housing here. It started with a public authority that did an amazing job to help to subsidize and have CDBG funding, and then from there, it blossomed under the auspices of Levon Lamy to the affiliate in two thousand and eighteen. And then in two thousand and twenty, the Hometown for All Initiative was set up under this council's vision and leadership. So when we look at that, again, we're looking at a housing model that starts with the developer. This is something you all know, you know it like your back of your hand, but it's an accessible visual for not only our departments, but also our community members to show how Hometown for All actually functions. It's very easy when you have this kind of guide. But our graph, if you look, the focus is on the idea of home. Everything underneath this has to do with home. Looking at a community reinvestment model or exploring one then shifts that focus from the word home to the word town. How do we expand our vision? How do we expand our strategies to what does the development of town look like? So as you see in this graph, nowhere in the graph are we giving room or breadth of depth to economic development or those services that help sustain those families in their homes, especially those families that are especially vulnerable, like those targeted by the right to breathe. So we're trying to consider how to expand our approach and strategies to be complementary to those home and housing and real estate plays that are currently successful and underway. How do we energize them and invigorate them? So what would that look like? In this model, you see that considering a community reinvestment model would be considering a hybrid model. Again, I'm using the words of housing and economic development. It's looking at using a mix and a vast array of funding options, traditional, private equity, social impact, city funds, and community reinvestment funds, banking funds, community foundation funds, a wide array of funds that allows us as a city to have flexible and full development. You hear full development in every way that I've emphasized before. This visually represents a new model that builds on the brick-and-mortar model of housing to actually expand to the scope of services that surround that brick-and-mortar housing model. Again, when we ask about that middle box, the diversity of funds and looking at other funds, oftentimes, the funding from private equity or social impact investors or contributor look at larger pictures and outcomes that their funds achieve. So we need, as a city, to be able to show how we achieve those outcomes. We're data-driven city. We're data driven city, we're already tracking outcomes through our performance measures. So a new community investment, reinvestment model rather, really dials into the data and sources that we already have possible and looks at how banks and other funding sources can use our outcomes to demonstrate how they are actually meeting the needs of our Tempe community. So why consider creating a community reinvestment fund? You see those three reasons there. But as I've said, let's look at ways of how we really take the efforts that are being done well. How do we bolster them? The bottom line is that we're looking at a tool that can be used to help ensure that the city's efforts and strategies stay sustainable, that they stay effective, but most importantly, that they're drilled down to our community level and centered on what our community needs. This is a strategy that includes housing, economic development, that's right sized for our community. We get investments in there by combining currently existing strategies. If that is a tool that's an economic development corporation, a community development corporation, a community development financial institution, all of those are tools that we're exploring. But we're looking at the diversity of funding as the nail to which that tool drives impact to our communities. Ultimately, as I said, I wanted to to present you all with the the updates that's that's currently either underway, under development or being explored. But the bottom line is that this is not a question of decision making, thankfully for you all today, to spare you all the the brain cells for that. But I wanted to update this council. It had been some time since you all graciously allowed us the funding to move forward with our consultant Scott Syfax to update you on what we're doing to date. We simply wanted to make space for council to give any suggestions or or any further feedback on the direction that we've gone. However, once we have a final opinion that's been rendered by outside council and and our city's own council about which tool we can use, if at all, as a new community reinvestment model, then our office in combination with the human services department and economic development department will come before council again to report out on our findings. Thank you so much for your your time and attention, and I look forward to any questions or feedback.
Great. Thank you so much, Jonay. Really appreciate the presentation. I know I've had an opportunity to talk with you quite a bit about this over the last few months. And quite honestly, I think this is just truly exceptional work. It just continues to show how far out in front the city of Tempe is with such innovative initiatives, quite honestly. I mean, I can't encapsulate everything that you said, but I can say that I don't have a concern with any of it. I think that it's all magnificent work. I'm so proud that we're engaged in this space and that you are leading the charge on behalf of the city of Tempe and the and the city council. And so from my perspective, just exceptional job, great work. I just can't wait to see what you continue to do moving forward. I'm going to move to Councilmember Cubey and then Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jonay. The work is exceptional. I'm actually kind of speechless, so I should just leave it at that. But we've had the opportunity to speak, and I think that this document and the work you've done really reflect the values of our city and our residents and our council. So I thank you, like, stand up and applaud. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I went off when you were speaking. And thank you, Councilmember Cubey. I wanted to get some light for you all. But and this is not just my work, this is the hard work of of all the departments in this, but I I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you, Jonay. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just echo what Councilmember Cubey said. I think that this has been amazing, a great presentation. Lots of really good information on there. I think that thing that stuck in my head when you were talking was that you had a goal of sitting down with 1,200, having 1,200 sessions, and you're already at 1,000 sessions. I think that's pretty impressive. And it just shows the need for what is going on here. So I just want to say thank you, all the departments, everybody. You guys done a wonderful job. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Deputy Director Octavia Harris and her team have truly lifted that effort and done all of the great work to to get to that successful number. And so they're over there making things happen. So thank you for that recognition to them.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation. I'm so excited about this program going forward. And Jonay, you just you do such good work, and and I just really appreciate, you know, all the effort that you put into this. This is a very complicated process, and I have all the confidence in the world that we're going to get this done and move forward with it. So thanks again. Keep up the great work.
Thank you for the encouragement, Councilmember Adams. We're getting there.
No stopping us now.
Excellent. Any other council members, any comments or questions for Jonay? All right. That being said, once again, a great presentation. I mean, this is just great work. I think we're all truly speechless, and that's obviously for a very good reason. So we just really appreciate everything you're doing and just keep up the great work. And we'll look forward to another presentation in the very near future.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right. Next up here is the last item under issue review, which is item two B, Character Area One, Papago North Tempe Draft Plan. And I think I've got Ryan LeVake and Ambika as well on this.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes. Oh, and actually, really quick, Ryan, before you start, Madam Clerk, I should ask, were there any comment cards received from the public on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, there were not.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you so much. Ryan, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If Ambika could load up the presentation.
Give me one second, Ryan.
This is a beautiful picture of the West End on Seventh Street, but not our presentation.
I know. I like that so much. I put it on the... Okay.
I was gonna say, I love it. Perfect. Done.
Ryan, if you hear me, if you can see the slide, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. All right. I, Ryan LeVake here, Deputy Director of the Community Development Planning Division. Here with me also is Ambika Adikari, who'll be doing most of the presentation reviews on the slides. We are kicking off our Character Area One Plan. It's a draft plan introduced to you all. We're calling Papago North Tempe. This is our sixth of a total of eight total character area plans. We've got five completed, so the sixth one is underway. I want to introduce the rest of the team. Ambika and myself are presenting the item. And also with our team, but not presenting tonight, is Robbie Aaron, Shawna Warner, and Brenda Clark. Today, we're going to go over the next agenda slide. So in today's presentation, we'll be going over the contents of what a character plan means, the review of the outcome of the meetings we've had so far, the draft plan, which we provided to you in your packet report, and then the next steps and timelines of when we seek to eventually finalize the plan and seek adoption. And at the end of these slides and presentations, we seek the city council's guidance for the planned and further discussions, if you would like. So Ambika, take it away.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Mr. Mayor and the council members, good evening to you all. Once again, for the record, Ambika Adikari, Community Development, Principal Planner. So we have all the team for any discussions and questions for later on. But let me start with this slide. This is our branding for the Character Area One, Papago North Tempe. And at the bottom, we provide a web address, characterareas.temp.gov. That contains all the information about this particular plan and also any completed plan that we had and updates, including drafts, the meeting minutes, the summary of the public input and so on. So I don't have to explain this to everyone here, but I know there are a couple of new new people in the council. So very briefly, what is a character area plan? A character area plan is a high level policy level plan. It's not regulatory. This is something that really furthers the goal of the general plan. The General Plan 2040 does envision the character area plan, so that's why we're working on it. The vision of a character area plan is basically derived from the input from the residents, business community and the stakeholders. And we base the identifying elements of the area on what actually gives it a character based on the history, the design aesthetics, housing patterns, the years when the housing was built, the cultural resources, open spaces, the general aesthetic of the place that really gives, okay, this is the character of this particular area. Then the plan includes design goals and principles. That is the most important component of the plan that has a number of elements that we go and we devise principles and we put that in a sense forward. That includes many different elements. In this particular draft, we sent you a draft of the plan as 15 different elements. And all of this plan is through a very strong participatory process, and I will talk a little bit about that also. The planning process does fit the council priorities, specifically priority number three, which is quality of life, and priority number four, the sustainable growth and development. It cuts across many of the specific performance measures. And you'll see those are on the 20 Minute City, some recreational elements, and the tree coverage, community carbon neutrality outreach to the community, those kind of elements. Then the the quick map like Ryan mentioned, the six character area plans are in the process. The solid color one, number three, four, five, seven, and eight, those have been completed. Those plans have been adopted. The the number two and number six with the gray stripes are the one that will work in the future. Number one on the top that you're looking at with the orange stripes is the one that we're working on right now. Just to show you the boundary on the right side of the slide, you see the character area one boundary. It is all of the Tempe's land north of the Loop 22 freeway. And as you see, on the east side is the McLintock Drive. On the west side is the Priest Drive in its alignment. And on the north is all the boundaries of the city. The, just to give you a glimpse of what is the size and the population we're talking about, the character area one has an area of 3.35 square miles, which comes to about eight and a half percent of the total 40.1 square mile of Tempe. The population according to 2020 census is about slightly less than 10,000. That is about five and a half percent of the total citywide population. Many other parameters are pretty much similar in proportion to the city, except that the median household income in character area one is slightly lower than the median household income citywide. Now, providing you a quick status of the planning process, we started this planning process officially on March 15. Those are the two kickoff meetings. Actually, Mayor Woods provided welcome address in both of them on the recorded video. And then subsequently, we posted an online public survey for about three weeks, and I'll go over quickly the outcome of those surveys. Basically, we wanted to see what are the preference of the community. And then we held two public meetings personally on May 11, two in-person meeting on June 14th and 26th at Papago Park itself. And that was followed by two focus group meetings on June 29. One group being the nonprofit, which was interested in the area. The other group being the business community interested in the area. Then we went to a survey after the May 11 meeting for like six weeks. This was the most important part of the survey. We call it dotocracy, dots plus democracy. We give everyone 10 dots for them to vote on 17 different elements that I'll talk about. And then people voted on that, and that actually gave us the direction to draft the plan. In the meantime, we've been presenting, we've gone to 10 boards and commissions to get their input and also inform them of the process of the planning. And on the basis of all of that, we produced about 30, 40 pages of a draft plan, a copy of which you have, and it's also available to public right now. And we have put the comment period for this plan for until September 19. But depending on the interest of the people and how much feedback we get, we can always extend that also. Now I will quickly go over the outcomes of the meetings and surveys. The first survey that we did after the kickoff meeting, we had seven questions that we asked in the survey. And it was pretty well responded to. 91 people actually responded to that survey. And then out of the seven elements that we have provided, people voted mostly for the canal side trails, park enhancement and streetscape. Not surprisingly, this area being full of open spaces and parks, people actually valued that in response to our question, what amenities and enhancement would you like to see within the Papago North Tempe? So this is what we got as a snapshot. But we also asked them to write in any other comments. And many of the residents talked about security, transient population, bike lanes and signees and trails. Then another example of those seven questions, the question number two was, what kind of land uses would you like to see increased in the Papago North Tempe area? And the votes were as follows. Many people voted again, not surprisingly, for open space, then residential and commercial office and so forth. And then in the writing portion, people spoke about an accession of the county island. We discussed that a little bit in the draft, although that's something that the city cannot unilaterally do. And then people are interested on shopping, entertainment, grocery shops. And obviously, they don't like the rundown motels and the adult entertainment in some of the area. We had a very robust and strong outreach process led by Shawna Warner's team working with us. We went to something like 4,300 different households and property owners in the area. We send them postcards. We also utilize the email blast and also the social media. This one gives you an example of the postcard we sent for the first time for the kickoff meeting and also for the June 14th meeting just prior to the dotocracy, just an example. We also did a lot of social media outreach to the people. This gives you a snapshot of what what happened to Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, eBlast. What are the kind of numbers? What are the reads? To mean how many people it was sent to and how many people actually engaged through comments and likes and responses. It was pretty good in all fronts. And then for that dotocracy that I spoke about, because we wanted to get the idea from the people, which are the topics of interest to them, and how do we craft the draft plan based on the public's interest and stakeholders' interest? From the initial survey, there were like about 17 elements we had gathered together, things like said and public art connectivity and streetscape. So we had on the dotocracy survey, we had crafted a small paragraph, the one that you see here, it's kind of hard to read, for each one of those ideas. And then also, we had prepared some postcards, providing some visuals and what we mean by connectivity or streetscape or said. So these are only examples. Don't need to go through each one of them. But we did cover 16 different elements, street preservation, housing, green infrastructure, extreme heat, balanced land use. So that was the information that was provided in the online survey in public meetings and face to face meetings with the people. And people had an opportunity to respond. So you see a line of those 17 elements from said, extreme heat, all the way to quality design. The response to this survey was actually quite good. 106 people responded. And when we provided them with 10 dots on the way that they could use it anyway that they wanted, they could vote all the 10 dots into one particular area if they wanted. Just the extreme heat management to be addressed in the plan. They could vote with 10 dots just in one. Or they could distribute it anyway that they wanted and leave some of them with zero. And people voted, again, unsurprisingly, many of the climate and environmental elements. But people voted to all the 17 elements, all the way to quality design. Maybe there was a little bit of a difference in voting, but people are interested in capturing all those elements in the draft plan. capturing all those elements in the draft plan. And we also, uh, went to the young people, we went to Lert Elementary School. I know that the council and mayor have given us indication to, uh, to outreach with the young people. And then they were a little more idealistic, they voted more for extreme heat and climate change and open space. Uh, a good response there also, sixty students responded and it was not too different. So they voted for many things almost similarly, but they voted for more climatic type of elements and environmental elements in the plan is more important priorities for them. Now I'm going to go very quickly over the draft plan, a copy of which you have. Uh, it's about forty-two pages with appendices, but actual text is probably just about thirty pages in the draft plan. The draft plan has the initial introduction of the area, the purpose of the plan and existing character, all of that are like preamble. And then there's a couple of pages of discussion on how the plan was developed through a public process, the outreach process, how people responded, how did we select all those elements of the plan that will go into the draft character area plan? And those initial list of seventeen principles in the plan, you'll actually see the fifteen principles because we combine one or two of them together, but they do deal with all those principles that people had voted in the beginning and identified. And for anyone, because we want the plan to be readable and short. And for anyone interested into going into details, we'll be putting in appendices, all the details about things like the list of the plan that, uh, we want on the character area, what are some of the images, socioeconomic data, public input summary, all that will be in the, uh, appendix, appendices. So just a glimpse of the draft on the preamble side, what are the historic resources, what are the character defining elements in the plan? There are some examples. You will see a map that shows the cultural resources areas in the character area one geography is defined in two thousand forty general plan with the asterisks, you'll see the historic buildings and structure and historic eligible structures. So we've kind of written a little bit about what are the most important assets in the particular area and what gives it a very distinct characteristic, the natural landscape, the rock formation, some of the types of plants that we have and some very important iconic establishment like the Big Circle and obviously the different characteristics of the residential district. And you will see a lot of images, the staff, uh, especially Rob and I went to that area quite a bit of times to take pictures just to understand and also put into the plan so that anyone who looks at the plan can understand what is the visual character of that area, what is the mental image that you can, uh, take it. So just a few examples there. Then out of those seventeen elements, we have reorganized and combined them into fifteen. The draft plan talks about these fifteen different elements, starting with the subareas of the character area to historic reservations to neighborhood characters, walkability standards, open space, all the way finally to public health friendly planning. But we wanted to add that also, given the pandemic, there's going to be an awareness of it and looks like this is something that we'll live with. So there are some social distancing density related, some design related principles that we have recommended in the plan. So each one of those elements in the draft, you will see about a page in average, sometimes two pages, sometimes maybe three quarter of a page. And each will be described in a preamble, what are the goals that we are looking at? And each of those principles, uh, each one of those principal areas will have the principles and recommendations that are written in it so that the staff can review any new proposals accordingly, so that any applicant, architects or the developers can look at the principles that we are looking at so that they can make their plans and redevelopment plans compatible. This is an example of what is written in the public art, which is about half a page in the document. There is a preamble by public art is important. And there are a couple of principles on how we want that public art to be reflected in the, uh, projects. And the different principles that we have, which are hundreds of them in the draft, we also add visuals for them, uh, to many of them, anything that's important, we'll see what we need. If there's a principle that talks about, we want the onsite rainwater to be harvested as much as possible and then utilized for landscaping, then we give some example. So the top left-hand corner image that you see is an image that's so that the rainfall can be redirected to irrigate the landscaping that takes you from ASU. So, uh, sometimes in the text, uh, if there's also an image, it's very easy to read. Another one example is green roof and walls, all these design principles, uh, there are also some visuals when it is possible. The staff has taken all the pictures mostly in Tempe as much as we could, but sometimes in the valley because the principles and the weather, the climate dream is the same. Now, very briefly, on the next steps and timeline for this project, we completed presentation to ten boards and commission. Three of the boards and commissions will be going back again. As a matter of fact, there's one, we are going on the first. Uh, we go to neighborhood advisory commission, the development review commission and the historic preservation commission at least for the second time. Otherwise, we introduce the plan and we sought input from these ten different boards and commissioners. This gives you an overview of when we started on March fifteenth, we did two meetings and we did a public survey. And that was the basis for going ahead and defining the elements of the plan. And then the virtual public meetings obviously helped on that. We went over the first round of what we learned, uh, what were the important elements that people had spoken about. And then we also put the dotocracy, uh, the survey online after May eleventh. Then June fourteenth and twentieth, we met with people in person. We went to Papago Park, we advertised, uh, between the two meetings, I think we had about thirty people who actually came in person. Uh, and then also we did those two focus group meetings that I spoke about, we did the outreach to youth group and then the dotocracy continued for six weeks. This summer, we've been going to boards and commissions, uh, now we have come to you and then we have continued to do outreach. Our, our outreach will continue all the way, um, to the end when people want to give us any input through phone or email or they want to meet with us. We've been doing that quite a bit because of this plan is a community's plan, I think they, they will feel the ownership of the plan and we want to make sure that we hear them out. And the fall and winter is when we will come back to you, we want, we plan to come back to you probably, uh, for a hearing on December for a possible adoption. And depending on what kind of input we get from the public and what kind of guidance we get from you, uh, we've also, uh, left a backup plan that maybe early two thousand twenty-two is when we can probably come for adoption. That, uh, is the basic content. Uh, the most important part today is we want to seek your guidance and input. Uh, but I'm going to show this slide, the four individuals that Ryan spoke about, uh, people can contact any one of us. I'm going to go back to that slide and leave it there. Thank you so very much for your time and we are all online for any comments, any guidance and any discussions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council people.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ambika. Thank you, Ryan. Really appreciate the presentation. Council, uh, any comments or questions for staff?
This is Councilmember Garland. I just want to say you guys have done a great job with this presentation and the pictures and the outreach that you've done to the community. I, I think it's wonderful, the questions that you've been asking, um, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what the next steps are and the final product of, um, of this is. So thank you guys for doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, comments or questions?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I didn't even get to the hand signal. Thanks, Ambika. It, you know, truly it's the hallmark, uh, of the work that you do in community development and reaching out to so many community members. And, you know, I just heard, heard a little scuttlebutt in the community, not so much about this character area plan, but just that, that we have these wonderful character area plans, there's so much time and money invested and that they're not necessarily followed when we see the developments, that proposals that come before us. So I just hope, and this isn't for you so much, but just to fellow council members that we really, um, ensure that the character area plans are reflected in the developments that are brought before us. And if not, we need to like insist that they are. I know we can't necessarily require legally, but we really could, um, use our bully pulpit to, um, to see that there is a one-to-one correspondence. So thank you.
Sounds good. Great point. Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Let's go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and, and obviously this is near and dear to my heart, uh, starting these character areas and having the community have input within their geographical neighborhood, so to speak, and really kind of put the vibrancy of what the character of their area is about, uh, not just only in the parks, um, and the rideaway landscape, but what type of, like you said, development that can mirror and match, um, that is going on within those areas. So I appreciate staff continuing us on. This has been something we've been doing for several years now, getting through this plan. But I think that it's also one of those things that the community really gets involved in and, um, I'm very proud of, of how this has gone. I know that, uh, uh, Councilmember Ani Shakurjian, she was, uh, a key part of this too and, and a little kudos to her. Um, but, uh, thank you all, staff, and, uh, what a great presentation. I'm just glad we're, uh, continuing this, uh, this, these characters are just awesome. And it's a living thing too. It's, it's, you know, you can revisit that character area, you know, even after we've gone through the whole, um, process and all the areas, it's one of those things where you can keep on revisiting just as changes happen and, and, uh, make improvements. So I thank you, uh, all once again.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, let me go to Councilmember Adams.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I love this, uh, proposal and everything that you have done. It's a great presentation. I'm really happy about the inclusion that we've developed over the last few years, uh, with our neighborhoods and I just really am excited about moving forward with this and really listening to what the neighborhoods want. Uh, it's something that I, uh, ran on and, and continue to support and just getting all the feedback from the neighbors is super important. So thank you so much, uh, for, for doing every, all the outreach that you have. And I like it that trees are, are high priority on, uh, the list too. So that's awesome. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Uh, any other council members, comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I will just echo all the comments that were made. Uh, really great work, Ryan and Ambika. Just thank you for everything you do. The character areas are obviously very critical in terms of getting residents to, uh, take a very active role in what they would like to see in their neighborhoods and in their areas moving forward. And, and I agree with Councilmember Cubey, even though the documents are not necessarily legally binding, like, um, you know, like the general plan that pertains to zoning, at the same time, it very does clearly state the intent of what our residents would like, uh, in their community and more specifically in their neighborhood. So I agree that as we move forward, we should continue to make sure that we are really heavily paying attention to the input we receive in these character areas and trying our best to bring our residents' ideas, uh, to fruition in them. So I just wanted to say thank you again, uh, for the presentation and just great job. Keep up the great work.
Thank you so much, Mayor Woods and all the council members who had kind words to us. We really appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is two D future agenda items. Council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. And in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to simply clarify the request. Do any council members have any items they'd like added for a future agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Cubey.
Um, yeah, I just, you and I worked on campaign finance reform back in the day. And I'm so proud that we had such a high number, um, high percentage of, of voters support that and we reduced the amount you could give to a campaign from six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred, now it's been adjusted to, um, to five forty inflation. So I'm just hoping that we could take a look at the, um, not the charter memo, we don't have to go back to the voters, but take a look at the, um, at the ordinance because I think it needs to be updated. There were some little bit of loopholes in there and Carla knows about this and Judy and I've talked to them about it. So I was hoping we could hear from staff what the recommendations were to tighten up some of the language.
Sounds good. And I, yeah, I will look to Councilmember Cubey, I will definitely look to our, uh, city clerk Carla Reese and I guess our city manager Andrew Ching to have this item added to a future agenda and obviously to get the, uh, appropriate staff to help provide some guidance in. But I, I agree with Councilmember Cubey that, uh, while it was, I, I really enjoyed the work that we did in the past on, on doing something really groundbreaking here, but we do have to continue to look at and update these ordinances just to make sure that they are keeping up with present day. So I appreciate the opportunity and yeah, we'll just make sure to add this for a future agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members, uh, future agenda items? All right, hearing none, I want to move on to item number three, which is called to the audience, the city council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under section four, committee of the whole items. On this work study session agenda, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
No submissions for this section, Mayor.
All right, I will close the public hearing and move to item number four, committee of the whole items. Uh, item four A is items ready for city council direction or status update. There's one item ready for city council direction, which is the Sustainable and Livable Communities Committee's request to authorize the city of Tempe to join the Arizona Thrives statewide alliance and the Race to Zero Global Initiative. Uh, does anyone from the committee would like to, uh, would like to speak about that? I see Councilmember Cubey.
I'm all lit up. Yeah. And, um, Councilmember Adams, I, I imagine you might want to say something, but shall I, shall I begin? I guess I'll just begin. And yeah, so we had this discussion in May, it seemed like an eternity ago. We wanted to return to council because we're very interested in joining both the Race to Zero and Arizona Thrives alliances. And we being good company, Race to Zero has, uh, other cities such as Mesa, Phoenix, Sedona and, um, both electric utilities and Flagstaff actually has a more aggressive target than what we're talking about here tonight. But in order to join, um, to join up, we would, we would need to increase our, um, our carbon, community carbon neutrality goal from twenty sixteen to twenty fifty. Sorry, we need to, you know, reduce the, the year we would achieve carbon neutrality as a community in twenty fifty instead of twenty sixty. And this doesn't hold us to anything. It doesn't force, um, commit us to any specific action or expenditure, but we want to be in alignment with the other cities that are in the valley and, um, with the, the mayors, the global covenant mayors as well, which you're a part of, Mr. Mayor. So I, I could go into more detail, but it's been a late night and I'm hoping for council consensus so we can move forward to, um, to sign up with Arizona Thrives and to the Zero Global Initiative. Councilmember Adams, anything you want to add?
You summed it, summed it up really well, uh, Councilmember Cubey. So I, I appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, Councilmember Cubey and Councilmember Adams for presenting this to the council. Uh, I am all in support of, of both of these, uh, ideas, so I'm fine. Anyone else on the council, uh, have any concerns or are you good moving forward?
I'm good moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else?
Yeah, that works.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. All right. With that said, Councilmember Cubey, uh, Councilmember Adams, you have consensus to move forward on both of those items, uh, which is exciting. So thank you so much. Really appreciate all the great work you're doing in your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Adams, for your leadership.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move here to item four B, which is council committees in progress.
Mayor Woods, I want to, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Cubey also for her leadership.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you so much. All right, moving on here.
The mayor for his leadership. As a floating member of our city.
Thank you. I'm hap- happy to float whenever I can, so.
Like a butterfly, sting like a bee.
Sting like a bee, exactly. Um, all right, so item four B here, council committees in progress. Um, does any council member I would like to provide an update regarding the following council committees, either the human services and community safety, sustainable and livable communities, or workforce readiness and economic vitality? Uh, any council members want to provide any updates on any of these committees? All right, hearing none, I'm going to move on here to item number five, mayor's announcements and city manager's announcements. I have one, which is a proclamation for Second Responders Day, and I'll go ahead and just read that here. Whereas the city of Tempe proudly recognizes September first, twenty twenty-one as Second Responders Day in Tempe and across Maricopa County. And whereas second responders provide vital support to first responders, working with individuals and families in the wake of a crisis, to engage them in To engage them in long-term supportive services that promote stability, security and self-sufficiency. And whereas second responders have especially, have played especially crucial roles, serving the community throughout the pandemic. Helping to put lives back together during a critical time of emergency. And whereas the pandemic impacted the entire community and caused trauma and suffering to many. And second responders have risked their health to help ensure that people can thrive in the face of adversity. And whereas second responders go above and beyond to provide services to the public, such as outreach to people experiencing homelessness. Providing meals and wellness checks for older adults, providing counseling and mental health services, connecting people with housing. Ensuring families do not go hungry, helping domestic violence victim's safety plan and assisting with securing jobs. And finding unique ways to provide life-changing support. And whereas Tempe is committed to meeting community needs in times of crisis through our professional, experienced and caring second responders. Including our human services care seven crisis response program and Hope Homeless Outreach Program. And our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Patient Advocate Services. And whereas Tempe also relies on second responders employed by nonprofits and other partners to help provide a robust continuum of care in our community. Now therefore I, Corey Woods, mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare Second Responders Day on September first, two thousand twenty-one in Tempe, Arizona. Next up, item number six, next meeting date is October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, I had, I apologize, I had to go back on an issue, and I don't know if it's issue review or or the um just a work group thing, but I I was. An issue I wanted to bring up was uh Tempe Town Lake and just either uh. It's something to look in towards of us aggressively looking at what it would take to uh incorporate. Uh, with the lake, and I know we have an activity within that region, but. What is, what is PD and Fire and either the Park Ranger program for those come back on task? What does that look like around Tempe Town Lake via having the use of a boat that could actually um. You know, for various reasons, for safety around the lake, water safety around the lake, but also for uh the ability to get um. Any other issues that might uh come up in and around the lake. I know recently we just had some missing people that uh that have jumped in the lake, uh we've had some people trying to jump off the bridge a couple of times. It just seems like we're slowly ticking up to where the activity around the lake is starting to warrant warrant. Uh, a look at what is, what does a boat rescue team look like on an hourly base? I don't know if it's it's a twenty-four hour type of thing, or if it's a high-peak hour type of thing. But I think I would like to have some sort of information um from Fire, PD on their thoughts of what uh that would look like. And incorporation with possibly a park ranger, just to have that patrol uh with our increased development that's going on around the lake. Uh, I just think it's time to start really actively, proactively, start looking at those situations, looking at that situation. And just trying to see if we can start progressively getting a plan together to start really having some progress on what a boat team rescue. Uh, PD slash park ranger, whatever that looks like, uh to help the activity in and around that area. And I I think this is the time to start uh looking at that, and I don't know where I can put that in, in an issue review, a work study, however it may be, but I want to bring that up.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Navarro, uh, Mr. City Manager, could we have that item added to a future agenda? I guess to have maybe uh, you know, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue with the Tempe Police Department give an update on uh how we might, you know, look at what Councilmember Navarro was suggesting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, we will do that, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, going back in, our next uh meeting is on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And with that said, given that we have known other business, our meeting is adjourned at eight oh three PM, thank you so much, everyone, have a great rest of your week.
Thank you, Mayor.